Okay, good morning, ladies and gentlemen, on a beautiful snowy morning in March. I'm gonna open the meeting with a, I'm gonna call this meeting to order and I'll start with a short prayer and Counsel Cravieak is gonna lead us.
Homily God, we thank you for the peace you have given us in this great country of Canada. Thank you for all the staff and all that you do for, for the people of the M.D. Please do be with them and, and protect them as they go about their daily routine. Thank you for this counsel and help us to make good decisions today. We ask for your blessing on this meeting. In the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Counsel Cravieak.
You're welcome.
I have agenda for me. Is there any additions to the agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. Reeve and members of council, administration will be recommending adding the following. Under 9.3.7, North American Indigenous Games sponsorship request. That was a request that came in yesterday and is, they would like an answer by Friday. Under CAO, 9.5.2, public auction establishing reserve bid. And 9.5.3, bylaw number 1841, fire hall number one renovation loan bylaw. And under closed session 12.1, intergovernmental relations under FOIP 21.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Any other additions? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion. Oh, you have an addition?
Yeah, just, that intergovernment, is that the issue? Okay, thank you. Wasn't sure if I was, he put one on that I wanted or not, but it's on there, okay.
Okay.
Yes, and Mr. Reeve, there are several issues that will fall under the category intergovernmental relations under FOIP today.
Thank you.
Just looking for a motion for the adopt the agenda. Thank you, Counsel Cravieak, for making that motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
That's carried. Thank you. I'm looking for the adoption of the minutes regular meeting February 28, 2023. Thank you, Counsel Swagert, for making the motion on behalf of council. The council approves adopting the minutes of February 28, 2023, regular meeting of council as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you. Looking for a motion on special meeting of council, March 7, 2023. Thank you, Counsel Crick, for making a motion on behalf of council. That council approves adopting the minutes of the March 7, 2023, special meeting of council as presented. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Let's go on to 7, 7.1.
Morning.
Development application number 2023-d-023 is a request for approach variance. Administration has received and is presenting application to council for consideration where the applicant is requesting a variance from the M.D. of Bonneville Municipal Road Approach Policy number 3A.007. The applicant applied to construct an approach on Plan 1922189 Block 1, Lot 3, in the northwest 262-5 west of 4 in November of 2020. Condition number one of the approved development permit required the removal of an existing approach by June 30, 2021. The applicant is now requesting approval to allow both of the existing and the new constructed approach under development permit 2020-d-234 to remain. The current M.D. of Bonneville Municipal Road Approach Policy number 3A dot 007 attached as Appendix C states that parcels less than 80 acres, more or less, may only have one approach. Notification of the variance request was sent to the M.D. of Bonneville Infrastructure Services for review and comments to be considered at the council meeting. They have no concerns with the locations of either of those approaches at this time. So at this time, administration is asking that council denies the request for the variance to policy number 3A dot 007 municipal road approach policy for a second approach as per the municipal approach policy.
Thank you.
Mr. Reeve, can I just ask, is there a problem with putting a second approach here? And just looking at the picture, it doesn't look to me like there'd be a problem with it. So especially if the landowner is willing to do it at their own cost, I don't see why we wouldn't let them go ahead with the variance.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. To Counsel Crick's question, the policy is very clear that we only allow one approach per quarter. If you were to allow this second approach, I believe the floodgates would open about people wanting second approaches. That's, that is entirely the reason is that it is, council policy said only one approach.
Counsel Swagert and Counsel Scarsen.
Good morning. Just a question about the, the new approach that they asked for. Has that been put in yet?
The new approach has been installed. However, they have not broken through the bush line to tie it into the existing, existing roadway that they have there. Can I get you to rotate that, Jolene, so that we're looking at it? Yep, perfect. Too much, yeah. One more. There we go. So as you see where the, where it shows with the, the blue roof is currently a separate parcel from where the applicants are residing. They're currently using that entrance to come through and go into their residence from there. The new approach that they have constructed is indicated on the, on the map there. The existing approach that they have to that parcel is actually the one that's on the east side. That approach comes straight into their yard site that they have to the south of their property. So at this time, they, or at, at the 2020 application time, they had requested to remove the one on the east and construct the one on the west because of the amount of traffic that they had in that area, concerns for break-in enters and, and those sorts of things. They were going to close off that east approach. However, since then, they have built a gate across that to stop any trespassers from coming through that side of the thing. And then what they've asked for is to have that residential approach on the east side, or sorry, west side remain so that if that parcel to the west was to sell, they would still have access to their yard site at a reasonable manner where they're able to see the traffic coming and going into their yard.
Thank you. Counsel Scarsen.
Yeah, I mean, she literally took the words out of my mouth. I was gonna say, it looks like they're using their neighbor's approach, so couldn't they put that new approach in and take out the old one? So that's not an option anymore, you're saying?
They're requesting to keep both approaches.
Yeah, I'd be in favor of them building the new one, but taking out the old one if it's, it's just a matter of one. And that, the one that's on the left, on the right there doesn't really look like it serves much of a purpose, to be honest. It's, you know, they probably want to be more convenient to come out here, but yeah, they could be denied access to that current approach at any time, really, right? So they gotta cut through their neighbor's yard to get to it, right?
Mr. Reeve? Yes, go ahead, Counsel.
Can we just be real clear here? So they, they did get approval for the new approach and the new approach has been actually installed at the road, though, has it?
Yes. In 2020, they applied for the approach on the west. They have constructed the approach to the west, but they have not cleared through the bush line to tie into what they're using as their access point now.
Okay. So Counsel Scarsen, I would, yeah, they're not allowed to because it's the size of the property. It's unfortunate they haven't cleared through the trees there and used that approach because they, they were given permission for a new one? I mean, I'm not against having, it's just gonna cost them more to remove the old one, but, and it's gated off. So I mean, they're not allowed it. When they applied, they, they knew they weren't, but now they're asking for a variance. So it's not as if we haven't done it before.
No, we haven't.
So, sorry, so the, the one that they're asking for was approved, you're saying, but they didn't clear the bush? So what's happened in the meantime, then?
Okay. So through the REVE, the condition of the, of the approval from 19, or from 2020 was that they were to remove the east approach by June of 2021, in which they did not. When we did the follow-up report, asking if we could come and do the inspections on there, that is when the applicant requested that both of those approaches stay in place.
So they're no longer, they don't want to move, they wouldn't consider removing the old approach, is what you're saying?
They are requesting to keep both.
Just looking for a motion.
So is it, so they're, we're asking, they're asking for a variance, but you could still approve the new approach if they remove the old one?
Yes.
Right? So if we denied the request for a variance, they could still come back and say, listen, we still want to use this new one, but we'll have to get rid of the old one?
That is the condition of the 2020.
Oh, so that, so that still is in effect, let's say?
Yes, it is.
All right.
Mr. Reeve, interesting one because they knew when they applied for the new approach, they had to remove the old one. But then when they thought through it, they realized, well, the east approach gives them good access and it's there already. It gives them really good access to their south yard. I'm not sure what they do back there, but now they've just chosen to ask for a variance because they like them both. So I, I don't, I'm not sure, you know, how you deal with that because they're kind of playing the game, right? It's like, we could give them the variance.
Yeah, but it's just like Mr. Hogan says, we do this, so we're gonna have a hundred of them.
Yeah, well, we may. I mean, but that's why we're here, I guess, and we've done it before. Like, we've given variances for other reasons, but yeah, that's a, that's a tough one. I'm not, you know, I'm not, it's not my area. I'm not sure of the property, so I'd let somebody else speak to that.
Yeah.
Yes, Deputy Reeve?
Yeah, I'll make the motion of one, that council denies the request for the variance policy 3A 007 municipal road approach policy for a second approach for development application 2023-D 023 as presented.
Okay. Thank you, Deputy Ree Fedeau, for making a motion on behalf of council. That council denies the request for variance to policy number 3A 007 municipal road approach policy for a second approach for development application number 2023-D 023 as presented. Any other discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
Has the vote been brought up?
Sorry?
Are we waiting for me or somebody else?
If, if Counsel Swagert would like to indicate by hand if he's in favor or opposed.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm in favor.
Okay. Okay, that's carried.
Thank you.
You're welcome. On to 9.2.1.
Good morning, Mr. Reeve, members of council.
Morning.
This concerns bylaw number 1812, the consolidated public safety bylaw. On November 23, the consolidated public safety bylaw number 1812 was brought before a regular meeting of council and given first reading. It was brought back on January 10, 2023 for second and third reading, but was called back for further discussion. An amended version of the bylaw was brought back to the committee of the whole on February 21, 23, and the committee then recommended that it be passed by council at the next convenient opportunity. Administration is therefore requesting that bylaw number 1812, the consolidated public safety bylaw, now be given second and third reading. The update says requested by council at the time, excuse me, by the, by council and then a review by the committee of the whole were changes to the UAV or drone operation use and the expansion of electric vehicle use on M.B. trails. Both items were updated to the satisfaction of the committee of the whole on February 21 of 2023, and we are now ready for second and third reading through council.
Thank you. Counsel Crick?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. I just want to say thank you to the staff for putting the electric bicycle use on the trails in that bylaw, and I'll make a motion that we accept it as presented for second reading.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Crick. On behalf of council, that bylaw number 1812 being a bylaw of the municipal district of Bonneville number 87 to establish regulations for safety and security of the public within the municipality to be given second reading as amended. Any discussion on this? Yes, Counsel Swagert?
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, sorry. I had sent Director Yon some, a little update on that one, but I guess he didn't receive that one. But page 26, para 6.2.0, and then the first paragraph, para A. So page 26, 6.20, recreational trails.
Okay, yes.
And then para A, the second sentence there, or sorry, it's the first sentence, but the second line says, "Human-powered transportation devices," period, and then it's got and, and then a capital U's. So is this the typo? Or is it just to say, "human-powered transportation devices"? No, and then maybe a comma, and then a small u for "use"? Or "use out"?
Yes, through the REVE, I agree that there does appear. I didn't notice that myself and I wasn't, I'm sorry, I wasn't updated about that one, so the change was not made.
That's a simple change, just a comma instead of a period and then a small u instead of a capital U?
That's correct. That's the way I see it.
Okay. And then I had one other comment. 6.2.0B says, "No person shall operate a motorized vehicle on or adjacent to any recreational trails." And so it wasn't defined, so you're talking about allowing electric vehicle, you know, electric bikes, et cetera, on the trails, but then you say no motorized vehicles, but it's like, is motorized an electric bike now? So that means they're not allowed on any of the trails. So I, I'm not sure if it was defined. I looked, went through the definitions and I couldn't find motorized vehicles. So it's just, you know, you're talking about allowing them and then, and then B, you're saying no motorized vehicles, so I'm not sure.
So, excuse me, through the REVE, so once again, it's semantics, but yeah, the intent of that, that particular line was to prevent motorized vehicle, internal combustion engine type vehicle from operating in the, in the ditch adjacent to the walking trail. So we all know that we do allow motorized vehicles to operate in our ditches as long as they're complying with a few regulations, but we did not want them adjacent to or right next to a walking trail operating the motorized vehicle. We wanted them on the other side of the road. So that was the intent of that line. Having said that, I do agree that it's a little confusing, maybe a little bit vague, so I have to agree with you there.
There's a distinction between engines and motors, though, so I don't know if you want to put it in or?
Maybe something in the definition.
Just ignore it? I'm not sure.
I've made notes of both of those, and I can certainly make an amendment to that.
Otherwise, I'm good with it.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Mr. Reeve?
Yes.
If we're gonna make amendments to the bylaw and still give it second reading, if I may, I would maybe suggest option two for the motion to indicate that council gave direction for further amendments to the bylaw before giving it second reading.
Okay. You want to make another motion, then?
Okay, I'll just withdraw the first motion and make motion number two instead.
You don't have a timeline?
We could, Stephanie, can we have it back for the next?
Did we bring it back today later on, or no?
If council wanted to...
If I could, if council would like to see it again today, we could certainly, a tabling motion to table to later in the meeting.
Yeah, why don't we do that?
And we could make, we could very quickly make.
Then we don't have to do two things here.
Yeah. The typo is a non-issue because the typo doesn't need to be an official amendment to council. We have the authority under the MGA to change typographical layers in the bylaw. The amendment for the motorized vehicle, we could certainly do very quickly and have it back in front of council before the end of the meeting.
Well, let's just table it, then. Would someone like to table it? Thank you, Counsel Crick. And all those, I'll call for, do we need to call for a vote? Yeah, we need to call for a vote. Then we don't have to do it twice or three times.
It's coming, though.
Okay, we'll just go with it.
That's okay. Leave it. That's okay.
We're okay. They're okay.
Yeah, leave it, leave it.
Thank you. I think Counsel Crick wants his name all over this meeting. Yeah. Are we all still waiting? Okay, there we go. Yep, carried. Okay, on to 9.2.2.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. This concerns policy number 5C.001 fire suppression cost recovery policy. This concerns an amendment to that policy. The M.D. has a standing policy in place for fire suppression and cost recovery under policy number 5C.001. On January 24, 2023, an updated version of the policy was brought to a regular meeting of council for review and approved. While it was approved on that date, council later directed that it be brought back for further discussion on February 21, 2023 at a committee of the whole meeting. At that meeting, council directed that in addition to what was already approved, a clause be inserted into the amended policy specifying that residents would A, be required to show proof of insurance status on the property affected by the fire, and B, that at no time would the M.D. charge more than the maximum indicated on their insurance policy. These amendments have been made and the updated version of the policy is ready for review by council.
Looking for a motion? Yes, Counsel Scarsen?
So does this mean that you can, can you direct bill the insurance company or do, or can you hand an invoice to a rate, like a resident and say, and they can hand that in to have it directly paid, or is it, is the money that has to come out of their pocket first?
That, through the REVE, that would really depend on the circumstances that the rate payer has with their insurance company. We would, we would not be direct billing the, the insurance companies. I would just, I don't believe we have the ability to do that. You know, we, we've got a, we've seen that happen in businesses throughout the community. Some, some businesses are able to direct bill for, for physical things, whether it's dental or physiotherapy or whatnot, others do not. But it's, usually it's, it's a matter of them simply taking the bill and providing it to their, their provider with some paperwork, some added paperwork that has to go along with it. So it would be very difficult for us to engage all the insurance companies and be able to make those arrangements.
Good. Counsel Swagert?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Reeve. You know, I've had a lot of thought about this. I've, I've kind of never been in favor of, of trying to bill residents for fire calls, but I, I guess one of my concerns, we're, we're still asking questions about it. I mean, I'd rather see us do a kind of a trial period for like two years or something where you don't bill anybody, but you go through exactly what you would do if you were billing people. We're doing this kind of on our own because the Fire Authority represents all the communities from Goodrich to Cherry Grove. City Coal Lake has our fire trucks and they are gonna go through, you know, are they gonna go through a similar process or how are they gonna kind of bill our residents? And Town of Bonneville doesn't bill, you know, also, so I, I just, you know, if, if it's a good idea and we're gonna kind of recoup money on it, I just think we should have had more details and more discussions with everybody in the Fire Authority, not just kind of our council decides we're gonna do this. So that's just my two bits worth.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Deputy Ree Fedeau?
Yeah, we're not, we're not billing the, the residents. We're actually, we're looking for the insurance companies not to get away with, with, with their claims, right? So if it's, if you have any of your claim, I mean, we are, we're saving money on it. I mean, we've spent $2.1 million on new apparatuses. That's, I mean, that has to be some sort of cost recapture. That's, you know, I mean, if we didn't spend that kind of money and, you know, now we're looking at a hall and everything else. Fire is a, is a high cost of, of municipality and of our budget, and I think we need to find some cost recovery units and ideas, and this is a great one, that does not affect the resident. And we have some parameters in here that, you know, they are recovered. And, you know, if the insurance company doesn't cover it, they can come and ask for, you know, not to get billed from, from council. It's, it's not that, not that complicated.
Thank you. Yes, Counsel Crick?
Through the REVE, to the CAO, how, in paragraph B, 2BII, it says, there's a phrase in there or a lack thereof referring to proof of insurance coverage. And I'm just wondering how somebody would prove lack of insurance coverage?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council, for the question. So if we're just asking for a resident to prove they have coverage or don't have coverage, if they sign a letter or send an email saying, listen, we have no fire suppression coverage, then we would certainly direct them to the next option, which would be to either pay the invoice or to petition directly to council to have the bill waived. The second set of that is B2, if they, if they decline to provide us with any, they deny us the request to provide us with their insurance, then it'd be billed for the, for the whole thing. The issue here is not to try to be punitive to a resident. The issue here is to, if you've got coverage, tell us. You're covered for $7,500 of fire suppression coverage and that's the maximum that the bill would be at that point. If you decline to give us any information, then you'd be billed for the whole thing. If you say, listen, I have coverage, but I have zero insurance coverage for fire suppression and you can, and, and you provide that to us, then our next step will be to provide you with the, with the invitation to speak to council to have the bill waived.
Thank you. Yes, Counsel?
Yeah, I believe in the charging for the fires, right, if they got insurance and that, but I'd like to see us pursue, be, now, look if we can bill their insurance companies direct. There's lots of other companies that do that, and I'd like to see if we could look into that and see what it would take to do a direct bill.
Mr. Reeve?
Yes.
Thank you. We can certainly look into that, but there's, there's, there's just so many insurance companies out there, I don't even know, so we might have an agreement with one, but what about the 30 others? You know, in, in, for example, in the dental world, our dentists direct bills, but there's only two or three major providers of dental coverage in Canada, Sun Life, Manual Life, Blue Cross, et cetera. But in terms of house insurance coverage, there's, there's 1,000 brokers and, and numerous actual insurance companies. We'll certainly look into it, but I, but at some point, the, the administrative effort into this is gonna outweigh the ability or the, the reason for the policy in the first place.
Thank you. Just looking for a motion.
Mr. Reeve, I'll make a motion to accept it as presented.
Okay.
Thank you, Counsel Crick, for making a motion on behalf of council that council adopts amended policy number 5C.001.
That council adopts amended policy number five C zero zero one fire suppression and cost recovery policy as presented effective May first, two thousand twenty-three. Any discussion on this motion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Onto nine point two point three. Morning. No problem.
Good?
Yep.
Did you hear the first part?
Yeah. Except for Donnie. He's got her now.
So in the twenty twenty-three capital budget, council approved the purchase of three three-quarter ton crew cab trucks. One for egg services, one for waste services, and one for public safety, as well as the purchase of one two-ton truck with a dump box. A request for quotation was advertised on Alberta Purchasing Connection for each of the units approved for purchase in twenty twenty-three. After reviewing all submissions, it was determined that Tercier Motors met the requirements, provided the lowest bid, and was within budget for the three three-quarter ton trucks. The quotes are as follows. The twenty, uh, quote one, twenty twenty-three Dodge twenty-five hundred crew cabs, two hundred five thousand nine hundred eighty-seven dollars ninety-five cents. Quote two was, uh, twenty twenty-three Dodge three-quarter ton crew cabs for two hundred and two thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. Quote three was, uh, for twenty twenty-three Ford two fifty crew cabs for two hundred twenty-nine thousand two hundred forty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. And quote four was for three twenty twenty-four Chevrolet twenty-five hundred crew cabs for hundred ninety-one thousand two hundred eighty-six dollars. Our quest, request for quotation was also advertised on Alberta Purchasing Connection for a two-ton four-by-four truck, and we received two submissions. After reviewing and evaluating both quotes, Dushar Motors met the requirements and provided a quote for a hundred seventeen thousand six hundred ninety-four dollars and ninety-five cents. The second quote for a Dodge Ram fifty-five hundred was less but did not meet all requirements. The recommended truck is over budget by forty-two thousand six hundred ninety-four dollars and ninety-five cents. The quotes were as follows. Quote one, a twenty twenty-three Dodge Ram fifty-five hundred with aluminum dump box for a hundred and thirteen dollars and, or sorry, a hundred and thirteen thousand nine hundred twenty-seven dollars and fifty-two cents. And this quote two was a twenty twenty-three Ford F-five fifty with steel dump box for a hundred seventeen thousand six hundred ninety-four dollars and ninety-five cents. The costs and source of funding, the sources of funding are the twenty twenty-three capital budget and equipment replacement reserve. The approved budget for the trucks was a hundred ninety-five thousand dollars for the three three-quarter ton trucks and seventy-five thousand dollars for the two-ton truck with dump box. The administration recommended action is that council approves the purchase of three Chevrolet twenty-five hundred four-by-four crew cab pickup trucks from Tercier Motors limited in the amount of a hundred ninety-one thousand two hundred eighty-six dollars to be funded from the twenty twenty-three capital budget. Second recommended, recommended action is that council approves the unbudgeted expenditure for the purchase of one two-ton truck with dump box in the amount of forty-two thousand six hundred ninety-four dollars and ninety-five cents to be funded from the equipment replacement reserve, and furthermore, the council approves the purchase of one Ford F-five fifty two-ton pickup with steel dump box from Dushar Motors in the amount of a hundred and seventeen thousand six hundred ninety-four dollars and ninety-five cents to be funded from the twenty twenty-three capital budget.
Thank you. Just looking for a motion, gentlemen. Okay. Thank you, uh, Counselor Swiger for making a motion on behalf of council. The council approves the purchase of three Chevrolet twenty-five hundred four-by-four crew cab pickup trucks from Tercier Motors limited in the amount of a hundred ninety-one thousand two hundred eighty-six to be funded from the two thousand twenty-three capital budget. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Looking for another motion?
Mr. Reeve?
Yes, go ahead.
Can I ask a question about the second part of this?
Sure.
Thank you. It's through the reef to Brad, Mr. Olin. The, the second one, do we have a vehicle we can currently use for that? Because that's quite a bit over budget, and I'm wondering if we can just use it, like, we don't, do we have, actually have to go ahead with this right now? Or can we postpone and try again for a better price?
So through the reef to Counselor Crick, um, we do have a, uh, you in, uh, sorry, a unit currently, um, that we're using a twenty thirteen. So this truck will replace the twenty thirteen that has, um, exceeded its lifespan, and it's, uh, causing us a lot of grief right now.
Yes, Counselor, sorry.
It was kind of a similar question, but when, when it just, when the word comes up, uh, approve unbudgeted expenditure, it kind of makes me think, what did we, can you describe that a, a bit better then? So, um, there's two vehicles there, or is that still one? It's, uh, it's not clear to me. Forty-two thousand six ninety-four for the one of them?
So through the reef to Counselor Swiger, so that, um, forty-five or forty-two thousand six ninety-four is, is the unbudgeted expense.
Oh, I see. Okay.
The budgeted amount, uh, that was approved in the budget was seventy-five thousand dollars for that truck. And so the, that was the, the recommended truck that met the requirements came in at a hundred seventeen thousand six ninety-four.
And sorry, that was the best we could find, though? It seems like we really unbudgeted, or we didn't sort of, I mean, the prices way, I guess way went up, or, with any idea?
Yeah, so through the reef to Counselor Swiger, I'm, I can't really comment on, on that, uh, that was, Egg Services Department, uh, submitted those requests for quotations.
Well, I can comment on it. Everything you touch nowadays, you can't find trucks, and everyone's, they're paying whatever they, just to find the truck is a big deal right now. Uh, I kind of went through it myself, but you just can't find, and then any used piece of equipment they want, way more than when it was worth, almost new. So it's, it's a real tough market out there. So if we have a two thousand thirteen, you said, that's given us a lot of grief. All that thinking nickel and dime is to death, uh, and then we need this machine. I take it for the summer, so I think, uh, like everything right now, everything's out of hand.
Just to add if I can, Mr. Reeve, that, uh, this truck is used, um, extensively throughout the course of the year, throughout the winter. It, uh, hauls our skid steer around for the waste services department, so we're servicing our landfill sites and hauling electronics and all kinds of different materials around, um, and, and towing a trailer with a, with a skid steer on it. And then throughout the summertime, this truck hauls, um, uh, land rollers around and, and a sprayer, uh, to clean the land rollers and other rental equipment around all summer long too. So this truck is extensively used by the two departments.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Reeve, for, uh, my motion to you there, that we approved the unbudgeted.
All right. You're okay with that? Him making the motion?
Oh, did Donnie? I'd rather have him make it. I just didn't see his hand up.
Either one. Okay. Counselor Subchik makes a motion? Sorry about that. Thank you, uh, Counselor Subchik, uh, making a motion on behalf of council. The council approves the unbudgeted expenditure for the purchase of one two-ton pickup with a dump box in the amount of forty-two thousand six hundred ninety-four ninety-five to be funded from the equipment replacement reserve. And furthermore, the council approves the purchase of one Ford F-five fifty two-ton pickup with a steel dump box from Dushar Motors in the amount of a hundred seventeen six ninety-four ninety-five to be funded from the two thousand twenty-three capital budget. Any discussion on this motion now? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I guess, uh, one second. Is Jenna, I hear Jenna's here from Lakeland? Yep. We'll take a five-minute break, and then we'll, uh, go on to our delegations. She's here earlier, so we won't let her wait.
Hello, good morning.
One second. Welcome back, everyone. We have a delegation, Jenna's in here this morning, and I guess she'll introduce her friend, and go ahead.
Sure. Uh, as most of you know, I've met all of you, except for, I think, Dawn personally at one point or another. My name is Jenna Colburn. I'm the owner, CEO of Lakeland Connect, and this is Caitlin Bush. She is, um, right now our sales manager and will soon be our events coordinator in transitioning roles at Lakeland Connect. But the reason we wanted to come in today is to, I guess, reintroduce ourselves to the council members who already know us and also to the new ones, let them know who Lakeland Connect is and what we do. But we've also added a whole suite of services to our company, so we wanted to show MD council, like, what we do, what we can do, and maybe there's some room to collaborate and use each other's services. So I did put together a PowerPoint presentation. Yeah, okay. Perfect. And it's just a little introduction to us and everything we do. And then if you guys have any questions for us at the end, you can certainly ask, and I can do that. Oh, thank you. Okay, so just a little company overview about us. So we were founded in two thousand fifteen. I noticed there was a need for current news, entertainment, information in the Lakeland that could be provided to people in a more timely manner than what it was provided in. And to give you a little history, back in two thousand fifteen, on July twenty-second, I remember the date exactly, because it was a really great day. I cashed a check from the MD of Bonneville, and they were my very first client at Lakeland Connect. So I'm really happy to say we have a little bit of history together. On August first, I put my resignation in at the radio station, and that was the first day of Lakeland Connect. So, um, since then, like, that was just a website recording news. Since then, we have added all these other products to our lineup. We do live-on-location videos, which I'm sure many of you have seen. We've done them for the MD. We've done them for Kinnisou Ridge. Um, examples would be at an event, um, say, I think it was the Vezzo Beach reopening. We went down there, did a live video, the Reeve was there, you know, celebrated the opening of that. We've done pre-recorded videos that aren't produced, so some clients or some people think, oh, it's a little too scary to be live. Can we do this pre-recorded? And it just brings a level of comfort. So we do that as well. We also do digital commercials, which are polished and finished. We do, um, social media, like, e- everything from doing reels to, um, doing little TikTok shorts to the more professional Facebook video that's polished as well. And we have our daily, weekly entertainment shows. Caitlin has her own show in the summer. It's called Caitlin Tries. And you may have seen her jump out of a plane last year.
Or I was at, I was at the, uh, aerial park.
Yes, you were at the, the new adventure park, testing out the park, and it was a really great way to show people back home, like, hey, this is what the adventure park looks like. Caitlin's a, you know, she's an adult, and she's trying it too. It's not just for kids. So that was a really fun video. Um, on our website, we have digital ads. We do banner ads. We do social media ads. We do product placement. We do audio commercials. We do the Pontiac play-by-play, um, where we've produced and made all those commercials. Uh, we do website design, hosting, business photography, business videos. Really, if it happens in a digital world, we're likely to do it. We do marketing plans, calendars, all that great stuff. So anything marketing, anything digital, that's what we offer. A lot of people see us as, um, just a news company, but it's so much more. News is a tool that we use to get people to come to the website and come check us out, but we have entertainment and everything else. So, uh, audience, to give you an idea, we have thirty-five plus, thirty-five thousand plus followers on social media. The majority of them are on Facebook, where we have over thirty-two thousand followers, and over fifty-five hundred on Instagram. Twitter is very slow-moving with just around a thousand fifteen hundred, and we've just introduced our TikTok page, so that's, I think, around two hundred. It's not very, it's not very high yet, but it's something. Um, so we have about ten thousand unique viewers a day on our website. When there is a big story breaking, that number could reach twenty thousand. Uh, when things were happening two years ago, that number was around fifty thousand and a day, unique people. So that gives you an idea of who's coming, and then each day it refreshes and shows us like a new stat. So each computer registers or each smartphone, and that's how many are coming to the website. Um, we serve twenty-five local communities. If you were to draw a circle from Cold Lake to St. Paul, Vermilion to Lac Lebiche, a big circle, that's where we, um, serve the news, serve advertising, everything in between. Our audience, to give you an idea, we have, um, around, well, six hundred thousand posts reached on our Facebook page. So that's for news stories or for videos. Um, our engagement is around a hundred and forty-five. This was taken and prepared in January, so that's our stats for the month of January, to give you an idea. We have about two hundred new people following us every month, um, just loads of share. We're, we're doing a good job on the engagement. So that's important to me, because when you have, um, information out there, but nobody is reading it, or nobody is interacting with it, or nobody is opening it, then is it really serving a purpose? So I wanted to show you guys, like, yeah, people are clicking on that. They're reading those stories. You can see link clicks are around thirty-six thousand. So people are actually engaging in what's being put out there. Uh, to give you an idea of where everybody is, we have the majority in Cold Lake, Bonneville, and the rural MD. So combined, that's the majority of people that are coming to our website, and honestly, it's the majority of the news that we're putting out because we are located here in Bonneville, and right now we have one and a half reporters. So that's where our main focus is, in the Bonneville-Cold Lake MD area, to getting the news out. So we offer, that's a little different than any other news company or marketing company in the area, live and interactive immersive advertising, so you're able to see, you know, who's looking at it. Say you wanted to put a message out just to the Bonneville beach, like, the Moose Lake area, we can actually target it to that area. We have marketing campaigns, like, we'll sit down and work with you on exactly what you might need and what you want, and of course, we have that viewer interaction. And, um, you know, we're never afraid to try something new. I mean, we had Caitlin jump out of a plane. So we're willing to try just new things, shift focus, um, go with the times. And what makes us really unique is that we're all personable, we're real, and we're local. So everyone who works for us is from the local Bonneville-Lakeland area. We, most of us grew up here. Caitlin's a transplant from Saskatoon, but you've been here for a good fifteen years.
Thirteen, thirteen years, yeah.
Yeah, so we're all local people who know the area. We know what we're doing, and we're trusted people as well, because people know us. So not everybody likes me, not everyone likes Caitlin, not everyone likes Chad, but everybody likes one person and trusts them and follows them, you know. I would say Michael might be the most likable of us all. Um, but our team, myself, I am the founder, CEO. Chad is the director of client relations. Caitlin, like I said, she's our sales manager, but at the end of the month, she's transitioning to our events coordinator. We have Elijah. He's our videographer and producer. Michael, our news sports. We have Krista, who's a content creator. And Courtney is our new student reporter. She just graduated high school from Notre Dame last year, and she took an interest in news and reporting, so we brought her on the team. So, um, I do know that marketing decisions are your marketing team's, um, decision, if you will. But I wanted to show you what we do for the city of Cold Lake and give you an idea of what we could perhaps do for the MD of Bonneville with the understanding that it is an administration decision, but I think council, it would be nice to know what we're doing, you know, for the city of Cold Lake, Town of Bonneville, St. Paul. So this is, um, near identical to the city of Cold Lake's current plan with us. We do a Facebook Live, which they actually pre-record each month. So an example of what we could be doing for you is what's happening at Kinnisou this month. And we come out, do a video, and say, hey, these are the events that are happening at Kinnisou. That's essentially what you do for the Energy Center monthly.
Yeah, just, we just try to make it exciting, right?
Yeah. Yeah. We do two segments with Mayor Craig Copland, which we could do with the reef, which we call the Morning After segment. So after council, within a couple days, we sit down with, um, the reef, and we would discuss what happened at council. And that would be focused on council, or say, a minister came to town, and you wanted to talk about that, we could focus on that. But it's more, um, what's happening in council. Not everyone's gonna be able to come. Not everyone will watch it on YouTube or stay for the entire three hours. They just want the highlights. This is a great way of getting that out. Uh, we do a social post per week.
Just one sec, Jenna.
Oh, sure.
Hey, hey, guys, just, yeah, thanks. Go ahead.
Thank you, Barry. We do a social post per week for, uh, where we've just put up an event or something that's happening in the city of Cold Lake- We do a social post per week for, where we've just put up an event or something that's happening in the city of Cold Lake. It really changes, last week was their fishing derby. So it really could be anything that the MD is doing. We have a banner up that they change once a month. We do all their press releases, which to be fair and honest, most of your press releases just go up. Sometimes our news team will take your press release and, you know, call the Reeve to get more information or call Al to get more information, but for the most part, that's going up usually anyways. Then we can post the MD events on the calendar and you get fifteen percent off any other marketing. That's a nine hundred dollar a month package. And the city of Cold Lake actually does the next package that I'm going to show you. We throw in Canada Day events for the city at no charge. I was thinking maybe the MD might like Snow Fever at no charge. That's an annual event that you partnered with the city and the MFRC every year and something that in the past you have used Lakeland Connect and didn't this year, but in the past you have. So the city of Cold Lake chose this plan here because the only difference is we come out and cover two of their town halls or open houses a year where they want us to actually livestream it from our side of things so the public can see it on our platform. So that's really the only difference between the two plans. And that one is a thousand a month is pretty, pretty much what the city of Cold Lake does. So we also cover their Canada Day event at no charge for that. So that gives you a little idea of who we are and what we could be doing with the MD. I'm not sure if council has any questions for us, but feel free.
All right, any questions from council? Yeah, Counselor Swiger.
Yeah, thanks. When I first started looking at the number of people who would kind of go to your website and look and I was thinking, how, how many people may be out of the area? But I think you've shown that there's not too many out of the area. But would it be nice like to have people from sort of long ways away come, you know, to this area and view your site and maybe be interested? But I don't know how you do that.
That's a good question. I would say the MD, if we are looking at a tourist site and attracting people from out of town, the MD has a good job of doing that. I don't know your exact stats, but just looking at your following on Facebook, I can tell that that's larger than the MD's area, so you're obviously drawing people in. I also know you've held contests where it's been, hey, enter this contest and it's been marketed out to a larger audience. We are based locally and my reason for that, like all of our news is local. So there's really no reason for someone in Medicine Hat to come on Lakeland Connect unless they know someone who, you know, committed a crime and they're like, oh, that's my cousin, let's go read this story. Other than that, we really focus on the Lakeland area because that's our specialty. There's so many people covering Alberta news and national news and they do a wonderful job and they're probably much better than we are. But we're the best at covering local news and that's why we focus in on it. It also gives our advertisers, we could throw up Google Ads and there's a Tide Ad every other ad you see. Every single ad on our website is a local business that we've personally walked into and partnered with them and asked, hey, what's your advertising goals? My reason for that is advertising is expensive and we're not that expensive. And so we're able to give the local businesses something that they can really value, that local people are seeing, that local people are likely to walk into their business and shop for, where they're not able to do that on other platforms that are more expensive or not tailored to a local audience.
Any other questions? All right, well, thank you ladies for coming in today, appreciate your time.
Thank you. I appreciate it, thanks.
You guys have a lovely rest of the day.
Thank you.
Just looking for a motion, gentlemen? Yes, Deputy Reeve?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to accept this as information.
Okay, thank you Deputy Reeve Fadiev for making a motion on behalf of council. The council accepts a presentation by Lakeland Connect on their business and operations as information. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. I believe we're at nine point three, point one.
Mr. Reeve, we are prepared to bring back the, the consolidated.
Yeah, I apologize. I know she's nervous, I did it on purpose. No, I never, I forgot. Go ahead, oh, he's in the back. Yeah, he's coming. No, no, he's not. If I do it one more time, then you can, then you're done, eh?
Mr. Reeve, if we could just get a motion to lift the item from the table to bring it back for discussion?
Okay. Thank you Counselor Crick for making a motion to lift. I guess I'll wait till it comes up there so you guys can take a look at it.
So while it comes up, Mr. Reeve, through the council, what we've done is we've added a definition of what an electrified vehicle is in the definition section, just to clarify that. And also, we have, we've moved a few sections around, just a, there was, there's duplication in one area that we found. And so we'll, once we get it up here, we'll show you what we've done.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's going to satisfy council.
That's Counselor Crick. Okay, let's vote. That's carried.
Just going to bring up the changes here shortly.
There must be a snow blower going or something, eh? Or a blower blowing snow or something, you hear this humming?
So what we've done is we've, I've got control here. So we've got a new definition here for electrified vehicle or electric vehicle. Recreation vehicle with an integrated electric motor used to assist propulsion, including but not limited to. And it lists a few of the common devices, electric scooters, electric bicycles, segways and similar devices. So that's, that's a new piece of definition additionally on page. I have to scroll down here. Sorry, can I get the, I can't seem to, yeah, I know. Yeah, sorry about that. So electric vehicles are also permitted on recreational trails under compliance with the following criteria. We've eliminated that section at the very bottom of six point two that stated that they could not, that we could not have a motorized vehicle adjacent to a recreational trail. We've eliminated that word "motorized" entirely because it's covered actually under the next section here. It says right here at the bottom, "All vehicles are not permitted in ditches directly adjacent to municipal recreational trails." So by eliminating the other subsection and just focus, and just relying on this and adding the definition, I think it tidies up the concern.
Yeah, good job, thanks for doing that, such short notice, everybody. Okay, I guess we're looking for a motion now. Yep, go ahead, Counselor Crick.
I guess I was under the impression we already had a motion on the floor.
No, you.
So we tabled it and lifted it from the table, so we should have a motion already here, I think.
You withdrew your motion and then we tabled it and then we had a motion to lift. You made a motion to lift from the table and it was carried seven oh, correct?
Okay, then I'll make, then I'll make the motion that we have proven as presented now, sorry about that.
That's okay. I don't think we had any discussion on it, maybe that's what happened. All right, you want to make this motion, motion number one or motion number three? I guess it's motion number three, correct? That's the one. Okay, thank you. Moved by Counselor Crick on behalf of council, that bylaw number eighteen twelve being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville number eighty-seven to establish regulations for the safety and security of the public within the municipality be given second reading as amended. Any discussion on this motion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Looking for third reading?
I'll make a motion for third reading.
Thank you Counselor Slipchik on making a motion on behalf of council that bylaw number eighteen twelve be given third reading, reading, sorry. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, thank you council for the suggestions, appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're going to go to nine point four, no. Nine point three for the third and final time, here she comes.
Good morning.
Morning.
I have five roadway licensing bylaws to present today for second and third reading, the first being nine point three point one for bylaw eighteen thirty-five. Administration is seeking approval for roadway licensing bylaw eighteen thirty-five, authorizing the MD of Bonneville to enter into agreement to license a portion of road plans nine zero two, two three seven one and nine zero two, zero two nine seven, located in the southeast of twenty-three, sixty-two and one west of the fourth in accordance with policy number three A point zero one eight as shown on the map in appendix A. Bylaw eighteen thirty-five is a renewal of an existing road allowance lease bylaw number seventeen thirty-five. The applicants have applied to license a portion of the road plans to be used as a driveway to access from Range Road four eleven A. A copy of the application to license was provided to Infrastructure Services and Ag Services for review and recommendation and there were no concerns. A public hearing was held on February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two and no one was in attendance to speak, oh, sorry, that was twenty twenty-three, and no one was in attendance to speak either in favor or in opposition of the application. Administration is recommending that council give second reading to bylaw number eighteen thirty-five and furthermore, if carried, to proceed to third reading.
Thank you. Looking for a motion, gentlemen?
I'll make the motion for second reading, please.
Thank you Deputy Reeve Fadiev for making a motion on behalf of council, that bylaw number eighteen thirty-five being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville number eighty-seven, roadways and licensing be given second reading. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, looking for a third reading?
I'll make a motion for third reading.
Thank you Counselor Slipchik for making a motion on behalf of council that bylaw number eighteen thirty-five be given third reading. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, please. That's carried on to bylaw eighteen thirty-six.
Administration is seeking approval for roadway license bylaw number eighteen thirty-six, authorizing the MD of Bonneville to enter into an agreement to license the road allowance east of southeast ten, sixty-two one west of the fourth in accordance with policy number three A point zero one eight as shown in the map in appendix A. Bylaw eighteen thirty-six is a renewal of an existing road allowance lease bylaw number seventeen thirty-two. The applicants have applied to license the road allowance for agricultural purposes and grazing of cattle across the southeast ten and southwest eleven, sixty-two one west of the fourth. A copy of the application to license was provided to Infrastructure Services and Agricultural Services for review and recommendation, there were no concerns. A public hearing was held on February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three and no one was in attendance to speak either in favor or in opposition of the application. Administration is recommending that council give second reading to bylaw number eighteen thirty-six and furthermore, if carried, to proceed to third reading.
Thank you. Looking for a motion? Okay, thank you Counselor Swiger for making a motion on behalf of council that bylaw number eighteen thirty-six being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville number eighty-seven, roadways and licensing be given second reading. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, looking for a third reading on eighteen thirty-six. Thank you Counselor Kravijak for making a motion on behalf of council that bylaw number eighteen thirty-six be given third reading. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried on to bylaw number eighteen thirty-seven.
Administration is seeking approval for roadway licensing bylaw number eighteen thirty-seven, authorizing the MD to enter into agreement to license the road allowance north of northeast twenty-four, sixty-two, six west of the fourth meridian in accordance with policy number three A point zero one eight as shown on the map in appendix A. Bylaw eighteen thirty-seven is a renewal of an existing road allowance lease bylaw number seventeen thirty-six. The applicants have applied to license the road allowance for access to the approved surface material lease eight eight zero zero seven two within the southwest twenty-five, sixty-four, six west of the fourth. A copy of the application to license was provided to Infrastructure and Agricultural Services for review and recommendation and there were no concerns. A public hearing was held on February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three and no one was in attendance to speak either in favor of or in opposition to the application. Administration is recommending that council give second reading to bylaw number eighteen thirty-seven and furthermore, if carried, to proceed to third reading.
Thank you. Looking for a motion? Counselor Crick? Thank you. Moved by Counselor Crick on behalf of council that bylaw number eighteen thirty-seven being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville number eighty-seven, roadways and licensing be given second reading. Any discussion on this motion, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, looking for a third reading?
I'll make a motion for third reading.
Thank you Counselor Slipchik for making a motion on behalf of council that bylaw number eighteen thirty-seven be given third reading. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried on to bylaw number eighteen thirty-eight.
Administration is seeking approval for roadway license bylaw number eighteen thirty-eight, authorizing the MD of Bonneville to enter into agreement to license a roadway west of the southwest eleven, sixty-three, five west of the fourth in accordance with policy number three A point zero one eight as shown on the map in appendix A. The applicants have applied to license the road allowance for the continued use of an existing communications tower. A copy of the application to license was provided to Infrastructure Services and Agricultural Services for review and recommendation and there were no concerns. Public hearing was held on February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three and no one was in attendance to speak either in favor of or in opposition to the application. Administration is recommending that council give second reading to bylaw number eighteen thirty-eight and furthermore, if carried, to proceed to third reading.
Thank you. Looking for a motion, gentlemen? Thank you Deputy Reeve Fadiev for making a motion on behalf of council that bylaw number eighteen thirty-eight being a bylaw of the Municipal District of Bonneville number eighty-seven, roadways and licensing be given second reading. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, looking for a third reading? Thank you Counselor Kravijak for making a motion on behalf of council that bylaw number eighteen thirty-eight be given third reading. Any discussion on this motion, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried on to eighteen thirty-nine.
And finally, administration is seeking approval for roadway license bylaw number eighteen thirty-nine, authorizing the MD of Bonneville to enter into agreement to license the road allowance east of northeast thirty-two, sixty-one, one west of the fourth in accordance with policy number. with policy number three A point zero-one-eight, as shown on the map in appendix A. The applicants have applied to license the road allowance for agricultural purposes and grazing and shelter. A copy of the application to license was provided to Infrastructure Services and Agricultural Services for review and recommendation, and there were no concerns. A public hearing was held on February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, and no one was in attendance to speak either in favor of or in opposition to the application. Administration is recommending that counsel give second reading to bylaw number eighteen thirty-nine, and furthermore, if carried, to proceed to third reading.
Thank you. Looking for a motion, gentlemen?
I'll make a motion for second reading.
Thank you, Counselor Slipcheck, for making a motion on behalf of counsel, that bylaw number eighteen thirty-nine being a bylaw of the municipal district of Bonneville number eighty-seven, roadways licensing be given second reading. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Looking for a third reading? Thank you, Counselor Kraviev, for making a motion on behalf of counsel, that bylaw number eighteen thirty-nine be given third reading. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Great job.
Thank you.
On to nine point three point six. Bonneville Health Foundation. Morning.
Today, I have a request coming back following the delegation by the Bonneville Health Foundation. At the regular meeting of council on February fourteenth, the delegation was made to council by the Bonneville Health Foundation, providing information on and requesting sponsorship for their twenty-fourth annual fundraising gala happening on April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Council at that time directed administration to bring their request back to a future meeting of council for consideration. The M.D. does support community healthcare services through annual grants and sponsorships to the Bonneville Health Foundation, the Cold Lake Cards for Healthcare organization, as well as the Bonneville Child and Adolescent Mental Health Collaborative. Historically, the M.D. has provided a ten thousand dollar contribution to the Bonneville Health Foundation as a fundraising sponsor for their gala events, as well as purchased two tables at a cost of two thousand dollars to attend. After a few years of missing the annual gala event due to the pandemic, the foundation is now celebrating their twenty-fourth annual gala on April fifteenth, and has invited the M.D. to purchase tickets for the event, a table of eight at a cost of a thousand dollars or one twenty-five per ticket, and to consider a ruby sponsorship in the amount of ten thousand dollars, which also includes one table with the sponsorship. Attached for council's review is the letter requesting the sponsorship support in appendix A, as well as the sponsorship information in appendix B. This event is in line with our strategic plan, goal number one, building a prosperous and sustainable community. Cost and source of funding for the sponsorship, should council choose to sponsor this in ten thousand dollars, it would be funded from the two thousand twenty-three council grants to individuals and non-government organizations budget. Currently, the budget balance is at just over forty-two thousand. As well, should council wish to purchase tickets to have two tables at the event, we would also have a cost of a thousand dollars to be funded from the two thousand twenty-three public relations awards and social budget. Administration's recommendation is that council approves the request for sponsorship for their annual event in the amount of ten thousand dollars as a ruby level sponsor, and furthermore, that council approves the purchase of an additional table in the amount of a thousand dollars to be funded from the two thousand twenty-three operating budget.
Thank you. Just looking for a motion. Yes, go ahead.
Motion number one, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Kraviev, for making a motion on behalf of counsel, that council approves the request for sponsorship by the Bonneville Health Foundation for their two thousand twenty-three annual fundraising gala in the amount of ten thousand dollars as a ruby level sponsor, and furthermore, that council approves the purchase of additional table in the amount of one thousand to be funded from the two thousand twenty-three operating budget. Any discussion on this motion, gentlemen? Yes, Deputy Reeve Fedeav?
Yeah, I just wanna make sure we can fill the second table. I know what, when we did the Cold Lake one, we had to look for staff to fill the tables. So I just wanna make sure that if we are gonna commit to a second table, that we're gonna fill it.
Good question. Would like to answer that. I don't think we've ever had a problem filling, did we have a problem?
We did.
We did?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't remember ever having a problem filling the Bonneville Gala.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, sorry, not the Bonneville one, but the gala's the general, right? So I just wanna make sure that, I mean, this is, it's a great cause, but I'm saying that, you know, if we're gonna fill it.
Yeah, make sure we fill it.
Yeah.
Was there empty seats at the last gala there?
Yeah, we had to look for, for general managers to come out and do all that, so.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Yeah, well, we have a table of eight that is, right? So we don't only have two missing because we could have the counselors at one table and the wives at the other one.
Well, everyone make sure that that was Counselor Slipcheck's idea. It's, it's online. Any other discussion? Okay, I'll call for the vote.
I'll tell your wife what you said.
Okay, that's carried. We have the addition of nine point three point seven?
So, administration has received a sponsorship request from the Cold Lake First Nations on behalf of the Dene-Goth Youth Center, a nonprofit organization whose purpose is to build guidance and leadership within the Cold Lake First Nations youth population. The Youth Center has a number of youth participating or wishing to participate in the North, Northern American Indigenous Games, a multi-sport event involving youth from across Canada and the United States. This event is being held in Nova Scotia on July fifteen to twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three. The M.D. does have in place policy two A point zero-zero-three, donations recognition and sponsorship policy, which does allow for a five hundred dollar donation to local youth sports teams advancing to provincial, national, or international level events to assist with travel costs. This is an emergent item, as we did just receive this via email on Monday, yesterday, and it does have a deadline of March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. So administration is looking for a recommendation from council.
Yeah, I'll move motion, option number two, that council accepts this request for sponsorship as information, and I think in the future, these, if we keep approving these things on such short notice, then they come in at short notice, and our staff doesn't even have a proper time to do up a report. So they need to get these in ahead of time so we can have a proper, proper report on these.
Okay, thank you. We have, I'm just gonna, we have a motion by Counselor Crick, and then we'll have discussion on it. Moved by Counselor Crick, that council accepts the request for sponsorship by Dene-Boh Youth Center as information. Any discussion on this? Yes, Counselor Skarsen?
Yeah, I just, I kinda have the same thoughts, is why didn't they just apply like every other team would? I know they say they got a March fifteenth deadline, but the games is set until middle of July, right? So, I mean, to me, they got lots of time to still apply, so there's a process, right?
Okay, thank you, Counselor Swiger.
Yeah, it was kinda similar, like, they could, they could just apply, could they not? I think, were they only asking for five hundred or something, or did I read?
Through the reef, they have not asked for a specific amount. However, given the short timeline, we determined that it would be best to bring it to council. If, if, if we were to follow current policy two A's point zero-zero-three, the amount of five hundred dollars would be in line with what we provide to other local youth sports groups that are competing at these levels. That was, and honestly, I, I just pulled it together as we just received it yesterday.
So, can I just ask another one? So they could, I mean, they could just apply for five hundred, you could call them up, and they could apply for that, and probably doesn't be given that much, couldn't they?
Through the reef, yes, if they wanted to go through the usual process for this policy, they could just submit their request and go through the time that's required. However, with this deadline, that wasn't an option.
Yeah, like Counselor Skarsen said, though, it's, they've got, looks like they probably have lots of time, but I don't know if you wanna contact them back or whatever, but...
Okay, any other discussion on this motion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. All right, to nine point four point one.
Good morning, Mr. Reeve, members of council.
Morning.
Excuse me. I have in front of you bylaw number eighteen forty, weight restrictions and road ban bylaw. At the regular meeting of council on February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, bylaw fifteen forty-three, weight restriction and road ban bylaw, received first reading. Administration is presenting bylaw eight, or fifteen forty-three, weight restriction and road ban bylaw for second and third reading. Significant changes include: removal of the need for road ban committee, allowing administration to determine when and where road bans will be implemented and removed; removal of any reference to TRIDAM-Axle certificates, TACs, as the province no longer issues them; and removal of the exemption for agricultural activities except for the use of farm equipment as defined in the bylaw. Attached for council's review is appendix A and appendix B, and reference to strategic plan is enhanced safety in the community with the objective of transportation infrastructure network safety. Reference to provincial and federal legislation, the Traffic Safety Act, RSA two thousand. And there are no budget impacts, and administration recommends that bylaw eighteen forty, being a bylaw of the M.D. of Bonneville, to regulate and manage the implementation of road bans for highways under this, under the direction, control, and management of the municipality be given second reading, and that bylaw eighteen forty be given third reading.
Thank you. Just looking for a motion, gentlemen?
I'll make a motion for second reading.
Thank you, Counselor Slipcheck, for making a motion on behalf of council, that bylaw number eighteen forty be given, being a bylaw of the municipal district of Bonneville number eighty-seven, to regulate and manage the implementation of road bans for highways under the direct, direction, control, and management of the municipality to be given second reading. Any discussion on this motion? Yes, Counselor Crick?
Yeah, I just have a concern with the, removing the exception for agriculture out of there, and wondering if we'd be better off to leave that in. I'm not sure what the rest of council thinks on that, but...
Would you like to comment on that?
Sure. Through the reef, to Counselor Crick, that was a, brought up by a member of council to eliminate or find, find a way that ag operations aren't exempt as they were in the past. This does not include implements a husbandry, like a tractor pulling a disc or a seat or that kind of thing. It has to do with vehicles that are road licensed, so any semis, that kind of thing. That's what it has to, that's what that exemption entails. But it doesn't include anything like, like I said, implements a husbandry as defined in the, in the bylaw.
Yes, Mr. Reeve, thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
But farmers hauling their own produce are also exempt, right?
Through the reef, no, that's been, that's been removed. Anything under, anything that is hauled by a vehicle that is licensed to be on the road falls under the, the road licensing, or sorry, the, the road ban bylaw. If any farmer wishes to be outside of that, they can always apply for a road use agreement like we have with any others that want to be exempt from the road ban policy.
But what does five point one B say? This is exceptions. This bylaw does not apply to farmers hauling their own produce or livestock.
Five point one? What, five point one B?
Like, I like that to stay in.
My five point one B says something different.
Mr. Reeve, members of council, under the new bylaw eighteen forty, five point one B says...
I'm looking at the old bylaw, right? Oh.
No, no, we're looking at the new bylaw. Counselor Kraviev, that's under offenses. Five point one B is offenses.
Is what?
Is offenses under the new bylaw.
And, and Mr. Reeve, members of council, I would remind council that the issue isn't whether a farmer could or could not, we're just suggesting that a loaded semi-tractor, trailer unit hauling whatever could do just as much damage as an industry truck, and if, and if there's a farmer operation taking place, it's just a matter of a road use agreement. So that farmer would be able to, or that ag producer would still be able to use the road and be over the, over the weight in the middle of whatever that ban would be at that time just by signing a road use agreement. So it's, there is a, there is a way for everybody to haul on the road and to ensure that we have some control and can mitigate the damage to our road network, particularly in that spring season.
Further to that, that's, that's acknowledged. On four point one G, commercial vehicles that have entered into a road use agreement with the M.D. of Bonneville and are in compliance with it, that is an exception. Sorry, I was looking at the new bylaw versus the old bylaw, Counselor.
Yeah, Counselor Swiger?
I'm just wondering if a farmer would read this, though, and he'd say para four point one A, and he says, says farm equipment is exempt, but he's driving a super V with grain, like, for him, that's still farm equipment.
Through the reef, to Counselor Swiger, farm equipment is defined under one point four C.
Okay.
And that is, it's a clear definition of...
Thank you, got it.
Okay.
Got it, thank you.
Yes, Counselor Crick?
Yeah, through the reef, to Mr. Vispalkel. What is the process, then, for somebody to sign up for a road use agreement?
Through the reef, and to all of council, it's as simple as calling into the, to the M.D. shop. The, my assistant there will take care of any, any paperwork that has to be filled out, and gets back to the, to the person requesting it, and they sign up, and it's, there's conditions on the, on the road use agreement that they're responsible for any damage, that kind of thing, and then they can get issued that fairly, fairly quickly.
Yeah, Counselor Slipcheck?
We're gonna put this policy in the rural review for notifying the farmers so they're aware of all this, that they're not gonna say they were surprised, right?
Through the reef, to Counselor Slipcheck, we could definitely, once, if this is passed as presented, we could do a, I'm sure through communications, we can do some kind of notification to the public that this bylaw has changed, and, and some of the significant changes that are in it, yeah? I can, I can work with communications for that, for sure.
Any other discussion? Yes, Counselor Kraviev?
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, just more red tape and time-consuming for the farmers. I agree with Counselor Crick that farmers should be exempt, is my opinion. Thank you.
Yes, Counselor Skarsen?
I just wanted to kind of elaborate on Counselor Kraviev, like, but why? Why would you wanna exempt them? Like, why are they different than an oil hauler or gravel hauler?
They produce food for us, and I think they should be exempt. It's always been the case, so why all of a sudden make the change? They produce food for us and I think they should be exempt. It's always been the case, so why all of a sudden make the change?
Well, you can make an argument to, that everyone is, uh.
Sure, yeah.
Could do as much damage, so that's kind of the way I see it, so.
Yeah, that's fine.
Well, I think, uh, the, the farms are a little bit more modern already, you know, I, I watch guys that have scales on all their stuff and they only put so much that the truck can haul, and then they let her go from the field. It's all scaled, a lot of guy, I'm not there yet with, with my farm, but we try to follow the rules as much because, you know, these things do leave, if you load up, uh, like a superbee or a tridem, uh, you can really make some serious damage on a road too, so I think, uh, I think the farmers in our area want to keep our roads, uh, good as well, so I think, you know, there's, everybody out there always has a load that's overloaded every once in a while, but, you know, if everyone's paying attention as best they can, we're gonna minimize the, you know, the damage on our roads. So, and the farmers want their roads to be good as well.
And if I, if I may, Mr. Reeve, uh, this policy or this bylaw would be in place for the protection of the roads and the safety of the roads, regardless of who's traveling on them.
Yes.
Uh, we can't be on them every second of every day, uh, you know, blading up a, a rut here and there, uh, because it's, it's been created. It, it's a general, uh, bylaw for the safety of, of everybody using the road.
And, and, you know, this area is really well used, our roads are really well used and, um, you know, it's kind of, it wouldn't be fair if, you know, the farmers got exemption and everybody else that pays taxes, like everybody else has to follow the rules. I, I don't think that's a fair, a fair, uh, fair field, so.
Okay, any other discussion on this? Okay, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Onto nine point four point two.
Uh, sorry, Mr. Reeve.
Sorry, I missed one.
Second part is, uh.
I apologize.
Be given third reading.
Yeah, I apologize. Sorry about that, everyone. Looking for a motion to give third reading to bylaw number eighteen forty, I apologize. Yes, thank you, Counselor Swiger, for making a motion on behalf of council that bylaw number eighteen forty be given third reading. Any discussion on this? Okay, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. Now we're on to nine point four point two.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. Uh, this is for policy four A point zero zero one, road construction and development policy amendment. At the regular meeting of council on January twenty-four, twenty twenty-three, council tasked administration to revise policy number four A point zero zero one, road construction and development policy to give administration limited authority to approve road construction projects within certain parameters. The policy was presented to the committee of the whole on February twenty-one, twenty twenty-three, and the committee recommended that council adopt the policy with the additional amendment, sorry, with the, with an additional amendment, adding the word and to the end of twelve A. Administration has revised the policy and it is attached as appendix A, and it is administration's recommendation that council adopts amending policy four A point zero zero one road construction and development policy as presented.
Thank you. Looking for a motion, gentlemen? Yes, Counselor Crick?
I'll move that we accept the road construction and development policy as presented.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Crick, for making a motion on behalf of council that council adopts amending policy number four A zero zero one, road construction and development policy as presented. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing that, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. Onto policy number four A zero zero two.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. Uh, this is for policy four A point zero zero two, road bans policy rescind. Policy four A point zero zero two road bans policy was presented to council on March twenty-three, twenty twenty-two. Uh, council's motion after the presentation was that council directs administration to implement a pilot program indicating no road bans and that council directs administration to ensure the road use agreements for major industry are in place for a one-year term and report back to council with the results of the program for permanent decision. Administration presented that update on November twenty-three, twenty twenty-two, uh, council meeting. Council's motion after the presentation was that council accepts the road use agreement pilot program twenty twenty-two update as for, as information and furthermore directs administration to bring back policy four A point zero zero two road bans policy to a future meeting of council as instructed for consideration. Administration has reviewed, uh, the need for this policy and it has determined that after passing the road ban policy number eighteen forty, policy four A point zero zero two is no longer relevant and pro, and proposes that council rescind the policy. Bylaw number eighteen forty already covers the criteria that would be outlined in this and therefore is redundant legislation. This will also remove the potential of a conflicting bylaw and policy. And attached is the policy, and it is administration's recommendation that, uh, council rescind policy four A point zero zero two road bans policy.
Thank you. Looking for a motion, gentlemen?
Uh, Mr. Reeve, I just have a comment.
Yes.
Are you okay with being taken off this very important committee by administration?
Yes. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make the motion for option number one, please.
Thank you, Deputy Reeve Fadiev, for making a motion on behalf of council that council rescinds policy number four A zero zero two road bans policy. Any discussion on this? Seeing that, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. We're gonna take a five-minute break. Okay, thank you. Welcome back. Uh, we're going on to number nine point four point four.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Reeve. This is for policy number four A point zero zero nine, snow and ice control policy amendment. During the twenty twenty-two budget deliberations, council asked administration to revisit policy four A point zero zero nine, snow and ice control policy, specifically the section surrounding sidewalk clearing. Currently, infrastructure services staff are clearing sidewalks in the hamlet. After long discussion, council directed administration to draft a new policy placing the onus of sidewalk clearing on the property owner. This revision would bring the MD into the service level offered by many other municipalities. Penalties for noncompliance are contained in the, uh, MD consolidated public safety bylaw. If council adopts the amendments to this policy, administration will continue to clear sidewalks for the remainder of the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three winter season and educate the public on these changes with the responsibility of snow clearing shifting to the property owners taking effect and enforcement starting in the fall of twenty twenty-three. Attached for council's review is appendix A, uh, which is four A point zero zero nine, snow and ice control policy. And, uh, there's no effect, uh, the cost and source of funding, there's no effect as labor and equipment would be utilized elsewhere for municipal operations. And it's administration's recommendation that council adopts amending policy four A point zero zero nine, uh, snow and ice control policy as presented.
Thank you. Looking for a motion?
I'll make motion.
Thank you, Counselor Carson, for making a motion on behalf of council that council adopts amending policy number four eight double oh nine, snow and ice control policy as presented. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing that, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Onto four, sorry, nine point four point five.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Reeve. Uh, this is for policy number four eight point zero one eight, dust control policy or program policy amendment. Council tasked administration with bringing an amendment to policy number four eight point zero one eight with a cost sharing model. This amended policy was presented to the committee of the whole on February twenty-one, twenty twenty-three. The committee recommended council adopt the policy with the following amendments. Policy, uh, section number one, remove the cost share. Section one A I, uh, remove entirely. Section one C, remove the need for council approval. Section one D, amend to administration notifying counselors of location. And section two, remove the need for council approval. Uh, the revised draft of policy four eight point zero one A is attached as appendix A. Uh, there is no impact to the approved, uh, twenty twenty-three budget and it's administration's recommendation that council adopts amending policy four A point zero one eight, dust control program policy as presented.
Thank you. Looking for a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Counselor Slupchak, for making a motion on behalf of council that council adopts amending policy number four eight zero one eight dust control program policy as presented. Any discussion on this policy? Yes, Counselor Crick?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Reeve, and through the reef to, to the administration. It says in the, in the, our notes here that there's no impact to the approved twenty twenty-three budget. And I, if we're taking out the cost sharing, isn't that going to affect our budget, or am I mistaken there?
Uh, through the reef to Counsel Crick, no, because, uh, we didn't have cost sharing included in our budget. So we just have a, uh, a dust control budget, uh, approved by, by you through, uh, um, at, at the budget deliberation, so, or sorry, at, uh, at budget time, so that money, or that money's, is not going to be affected. We're just gonna use that money until it's, until it's all used up. Uh, there was no, uh, there was no addition of cost sharing in this at the time.
Any other discussion?
Yeah.
Yes, Counsel Criviac?
Mr. Reeve, so at budget deliberations, we can, uh, put X amount of dollars into this, uh, dust control?
Yes, through the reef, that's correct. You can, we can have it, whatever council chooses to set the budget at, we'll, uh, we'll, we'll work within it.
Okay, thank you.
Good point. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing that, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. Onto nine four point six.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. Uh, this is for policy four B point zero one six, installation and energizing of streetlights policy amendment. At the January twenty-four, twenty twenty-three regular meeting of council, administration was tasked with reviewing policy four B point zero one six, installation and energizing of streetlights policy and to bring back amendments that would give administration some flexibility when requests to energize streetlights were received. The amended policy was presented to the committee of the whole on February twenty-one, twenty twenty-three. The recommendation of the committee was that, the committee recommends to council adopting the amended policy four B point zero one six, installation and energizing of streetlights policy as presented. And attached as appendix A is the amended, uh, policy four B point zero one six. Cost and source of funding for this would be out of the twenty twenty-three operating budget and it's administration's recommendation that, uh, council adopts amending policy four B point zero one six, installation and energizing of streetlights policy as presented.
Thank you. Just looking for a motion, gentlemen?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Counselor Slupchak, for making a motion on behalf of council that council adopts amending policy number four B zero one six installation and energizing of streetlights policy as presented. Any discussion on this? Okay, seeing that, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Onto nine point four point seven.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. Uh, this is for, uh, vehicle purchase of heavy trucks. The twenty twenty-three capital budget approved by council included carryover funds for the purchase of four heavy trucks for infrastructure services. A tender was issued for four heavy trucks with a minimum specification and accessories, including a dump box, sanding box, snow plow and snow wing for each unit. The MD received seven separate tenders from four suppliers. Three units are for replacement of units currently in service and one unit is to replace the loss of, uh, the loss in twenty twenty-one due to a, due to a collision. Administration evaluated the submissions and reports the following. Two submissions from Viking Seves were found to be the best for the received tenders, best of the received tenders as they met or exceeded the minimum criteria, had the lowest price and their earliest delivery. Although one individual unit price was over the budgeted amount, the total cost for all four units is within the total budgeted amount. Pricing is guaranteed until March fifteen, twenty twenty-three. Infrastructure services will present a method of disposal of the replacement units at a future meeting of council. Uh, the reference to provincial and federal legislation, uh, was municipal procurement legislation. Cost of funding is the twenty twenty-three capital budget and it's administration's recommendation that council approves the purchase of four Freightliner one one four S D uh, heavy trucks with the optional light package that in, included from Viking Seves Limited in the amount of one million, three hundred ninety-one thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars to be funded from the twenty twenty-three capital budget.
Thank you. Just looking for a motion? Yes, Counselor Crick?
Through the reef to, uh, administration, how much do we have in the budget for that?
Uh, through the reef and to all of council, we had a total of, uh, oh, sorry, I thought I had it on this sheet. I don't, um, I believe it was one point four five million, but I can confirm that. Uh, because we had one point one million and then, uh, we had the remainder of the insurance, uh, money from the loss. Uh, but the total amount was under the, uh, under the budgeted amount, uh, that was approved in, in the budget, in the twenty, twenty twenty-three budget.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve the purchase of these four trucks.
Okay, thank you, uh, Counselor Crick, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council approves the purchase of four Freightliners one fourteen S D heavy trucks with the optional light package in, included from Viking Kieves Limited in the amount of one million, three hundred ninety-one thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars to be funded from the two thousand twenty-three capital budget. Any discussion on this?
Yes, one.
Yep. Counsel Criviac then Counsel Slupchak.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. Uh, so how much less was this than the second lowest bid? It'd be nice to have all the bids, uh, with us here, but that's fine. Thank you.
Uh, through the reef to all of council, the second highest for all three was, for four units, one point four one and change million. That was the next, uh, that was the next one, and the delivery date for that was mid twenty twenty-four.
Counsel Slupchak?
Sorry, the delivery date for these
Sorry.
is July thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Um, I, my question is, okay, these were budgeted already and it's below budget. Like, are, we're gonna, we're, I thought we mentioned before, how about looking at, uh, where you guys just go ahead and can buy it if you're under budget, these units as well? As, um, like, sometimes when you're talking with these dealers, can you sometimes get a better deal if you made that decision that day? Cause I know sometimes I'll go purchase stuff and I'll make a, I'll get a better deal if I make that decision that day.
But it still has to come back through council.
But we already proved it in the budget.
Yeah.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. So council did discuss that, uh, um, probably a month or so ago. Uh, it is in our current procurement policy that the one thing the council does approve is vehicle purchases, which is why they keep coming back. However, uh, given the direction of council about a month ago, the procurement policy, uh, is, has just been vetted by the general managers and will be coming to council, uh, probably at one of the next couple of meetings. And, uh, um, so to answer your question specifically, we did get some direction from council, but that policy has to come back in its entirety.
Good. Yes, councillor Skarson?
The two from today would have been, would have came here regardless, right? Because they're both over budget.
Uh, any item, uh, through the Reeve to councillor Skarson and to everybody, uh, any item that is specifically over budget, uh, would come to council unless it's part of a package bid. For example, in this case, we had budgeted, for budget purposes, one point four five million dollars for three or four big trucks. The entirety of the bid came in, uh, at some three hundred thousand under budget. So that may not have come back, even though one truck itself might have been over, because this was a package purchase. So I, I guess it depends on how you break those down. The three trucks for sure would have come, would have been approved under what we hope is the new procurement policy, would have been approved by administration. Maybe one truck would have come back because it would have been over budget, but we would have indicated to council at that time that the total package was still, uh, was still under the budget amount. So it, it's a bit of a, um, it's a bit of a balancing act. When you have a package purchase, if one unit is more, but the, the entire package is, is under budget, how, how we deal with that, and I think the new procurement policy will talk about that.
Thank you. Any more, any other comments? Okay, I'm pretty sure I read this motion, so, um, I'll call for the vote now. That's carried. Thank you. Onto nine point four point eight.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. Uh, this is an R F D for the state of the infrastructure report for bridges. Administration has drafted a report on the state of the bridges in, or, sorry. Administration has drafted a report on the state of the bridges' infrastructure in the M D. Uh, I will have, uh, our projects manager or our projects foreman, uh, Todd Honkla, come up and do a presentation for council. And then I'll come back, uh, after that.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, uh, council. Thank you, Mr. Reeve, for having me here today. Um, certain risk involving, uh, having an old bridge inspector come talk to you about bridges. So, uh, Al has promised me to give me one of these if, uh, if I'm talking shop a little bit too much. But, uh, if you do have any, uh, feedback or any, uh, further information you'd like to see, uh, from what I'm providing here, please let us know.
Hey, Steph, could we take your two books there and, and jack that up for the guy? Right on.
Thanks.
Thank you, Stephanie.
So our intent today is to, uh, provide council with as much information as we can about, uh, the state of all of our bridge inventory. And, uh, uh, we're looking to provide information on what that in, inventory is, uh, what its condition and age are. And, uh, try to do some forecasting as far as what costs are going to be in the upcoming years, because there are some significant costs that we are expecting to be there. Of course, under the M G A, uh, bridges are considered to be parts of roads. Roads and bridges are owned by the crown, uh, at least in rural areas. In urban, that is different. Uh, they're under the direction, control, and management of municipalities that they're in. Uh, they're supposed to be kept in a reasonable state of repair and supposed to be managed appropriately. Now, of course, once we start talking about reasonable and appropriate, uh, we start talking about best practices, and, uh, some of the best practices for bridges are that, uh, of course, bridge design is something that it's considered to be engineering, and, uh, as it is engineering, uh, it comes under the, uh, Engineering and Geosciences Professions Act and the restrictions thereof. It, uh, really, in the interest of public safety, uh, it, uh, really restricts on who is allowed to do bridge design. There's an expectation that they're being inspected regularly. Uh, there are several different methods of inspection and frequencies depending on the jurisdiction areas you go into. Uh, there is no legislated requirement on, in Alberta as far as exactly what an inspection frequency should be. Alberta Transportation provides some recommendations, but I know, being from Calgary myself, we had our own, our own system on that. There's an expectation that as they get into the poorer condition, that they're being managed to, uh, appropriately to ensure public safety. And, uh, as they get to a certain point, if we do have to load restrict structures, there's an expectation that we're communicating to the relevant, uh, trucking authorities that they're aware of that load restriction. So, uh, the province provides quite a bit of assistance in regard, in regards to bridges. One thing they do provide is they provide a, a, a database called T I Ms, or the Transportation Infrastructure Management System, to keep track of bridge inventory in the province, and we do leverage that. Um, there's a bridge inspection system that we may use, uh, that they, uh, have created a, a number of years ago and that they, uh, maintain. It is one of a couple of different bridge inspection systems in the country. Uh, you'll find that, uh, east of the Alberta border, it's almost all what they call Osum, or the Ontario Structure Inspection Manual, uh, or some variant of. Uh, in Alberta, we are still have our own system that we developed. Um, whether that continues to be the case into the future, I mean, there are some efficiencies to standardization. That'll be a, a decision, of course, outside of our hands. Uh, and they do provide some, uh, certification processes and quality control for bridge inspections. Uh, or bridge inspectors, because a lot of our bridge inspections do take place by contracted consultants, and that's the case for the province as well. And so in having contracted inspectors, there's a requirement for certain certification levels on those inspections. And then on our big bridges across the Beaver River, uh, our, our four, four truss bridges, they do provide some inspection support on those structures. Because they're classified as major bridges, they do help out with some of the inspections due to some of the technical qualifications required in order to do those inspections. So our bridge, our, uh, bridge inventory in the M D, uh, of course, we have our four trusses across the Beaver River. Um, we have forty-five single-span bridges, which are just small bridges across creeks usually. Uh, we have six multi-span bridges, which are, uh, as a bridge needs to be longer. It's basically several spans in a row to make a longer bridge with intermediate supports between those. So we have a total of fifty-five bridge structures. Uh, we also have sixty-two, uh, bridge-sized culverts, which is any culvert that is over one point five meters in diameter. You can see, uh, in the photo there, that is a, uh, bridge culvert that we, uh, replaced on Range Road four eighty-five, just south of Highway twenty-eight a couple of years ago, when you can see that, that is, uh, uh, a, a different animal than, uh, what a standard culvert to be installed would be, and there's a significant cost in that kind of engineered culvert. So I guess, uh, one of the important things, and one of the things creeping up on us, is, uh, the age of the inventory. It's, as you can see from this graph, after World War Two, uh, people came home and, uh, we didn't have very many bridges at the time. Uh, during the baby boom and some of the economic boom activity after World War Two, there was a boom in bridge construction. As you can see, in the fifty to fifty-nine and sixty to sixty-nine year range, there, there were a lot of bridges built. Now, those bridges were all built with a fifty-year design life, which is a, it's not what we're seeing coming out of those bridges, uh, but it was the original target that was established at the time they were designed and built. What we do in order to extend the life of a bridge is we do it through a bridge inspection. So we have bridge inspectors going out there regularly and checking what the concurrent condition of the bridge. And of course, we're always learning new information about how long materials last and how long bridges last. And, uh, so we are finding that most of our bridge structures are lasting long, longer than what the original target was. There was a recent, well, not that recent anymore, but back in the nineteen nineties, there was a, a bridge code change that, uh, new bridges after that, the bridges themselves, not bridge culverts, were, uh, uh, they found that they had enough improvements that they could target a seventy-five-year design life. So new bridges are targeted for a seventy-five-year design life, not a fifty-year, uh, design life. Whereas the culverts are still at, at that fifty-year design life. They're not expecting those to last, uh, to the same length of a bridge. Of course, bridge inspection is a big part of our business, and, uh, uh, this photo here is, uh, me, uh, about ten years ago in my previous life with the city of Calgary as, as their bridge inspector. We have several different levels of bridge inspection of, that have different costs associated to them and are different levels of depth on how much information we're gathering about condition of bridges. Now, in the M D of Bonneville, most of the bridge inspection we do is what's called a level-one bridge inspection. Uh, level-one bridge inspection is a fairly cost-effective, I think, for paying about three hundred and fifty dollars, right? Per inspection to do a level-one inspection on our bridges. We, uh, are following the Alberta Transportation Guidelines for frequency, so, uh, uh, it's usually, it's about a five-year interval, so every five years, a, a consultant bridge inspector comes and does a level-one inspection on our bridges and provides a report. Now, that report will first go to the province for quality control and data entry into their system. And then that report gets forwarded back to us. Uh, there's a certain amount of time delay in that process. It can sometimes be over a year between when the bridge is inspected, and we finally do get that report. So what the system has set up is they have these low-rating advisories. So anytime a consultant inspector goes out and inspects a bridge, and there is something of urgency that they've noted, they will send this low-rating advisory to us directly, advising us about the issue, because there is a year to year and a half before we do actually get the final approved report, report from the province. Now, in this picture above, uh, for example, if I'm doing this inspection, uh, and I'm doing a level-one, I don't have any equipment out there. I don't have any special procedures out there. I have a, a notebook, uh, a pad, and I'm walking around that bridge, that's the Crowchild Trail Bridge over the Bull River and, uh, in Calgary. And, uh, I would be assigning condition ratings to all the bridge elements. Uh, I would be identifying issues to take back to the office to, for further discussion or maintenance items that needed to be done on that bridge. I would upgrade that. Now, in that photo, what I'm doing there is called a level-one point five bridge inspection. A level-one point five bridge inspection is, uh, is also called an enhanced inspection, or, uh, is all called, also called a hand. Or it's called a hands-on. Or it's called a hands-on bridge inspection. Now, a hands-on's bridge inspection is something where you can physically, inspector can physically touch all the elements they're inspecting, and they can take measurements, they can, uh, check crack lengths and mark them and compare them to future, future inspections. And, uh, something that inspector usually is get a very good hammer arm, because they're constantly hammer sounding all the, uh, concrete and timber that they're inspecting, because you can hear the deterioration. You can hear the, uh, cracking or the splitting within a concrete, uh, element. And you can hear, uh, if it's timber, you can hear, uh, decay inside. You get a hollow sound in a timber pile if it's, uh, rotted out inside where you can hear solid as well. Uh, then finally, we're going to go to a level-two inspection, bridge inspection. Now, a level-two bridge inspection is a very costly inspection. Uh, you can pay around ten thousand dollars for level-two inspection. It usually involves a, a certain amount of material testing. I know on this bridge here, uh, we used to do, uh, copper sulfate electrode testing on the decks to get an idea of how much corrosion was happening in the rebar or, or potential for corrosion. Uh, we could do a delamination survey. Uh, uh, we could do some, uh, sampling of the concrete powder to see how much chloride penetration there was on the deck. In the case of a timber bridge, of course, in the, in, in the M D here, we could do some timber coring or timber drilling to have a, uh, a, a, uh, examination of the shavings, uh, to see how much rot was in there and how much resistance we were encountering. Usually with a level-two, you also have some engineering assessment attached to that, because we're doing such quantification of the deterioration, that you'll, the engineers will provide us some advice to keep the public safe and to help us plan the end of the life of the bridge quite often, because we need to get a very, especially as a bridge gets into poor condition, we need to have a closer look, and this level-two is quite often part of that closer look. Now, the Alberta Transportation Bridge Inspection System, which is, is a good, uh, inspection system, it has its strengths and its weaknesses, just like they all do. But, uh, uh, all individual bridge elements are assigned a one-to-nine rating, with, uh, one being basically an emergency situation and nine being new condition. They do provide an overall structure for each bridge. They'll calculate an overall structural condition rating, uh, for each bridge. It's what you do is you add the, uh, a one-to-nine rating for the superstructure and a one-to-nine rating for the substructure. You're going to, uh, add those together, divide by eighteen, multiply it by a hundred percent. And so there's, doing that calculation, you can't get lower than eleven, and eleven, that would be extremely improbable, because you'd have to have an emergency on the superstructure combined with an emergency on the substructure, which you're not going to have, likely have two lightning strikes in the same, uh, on the same bridge. So you're probably looking, uh, in, uh, in, uh, most cases, that, uh, that's not going to happen. Now, this is kind of a breakdown of what the M D of Bonneville infrastructure is as far as, uh, structural. Now, I would caution you not to put too much stock in some of these ratings here. Uh, the, one of the strengths and the weaknesses of the Alberta transportation system is their condition ratings are heavily influenced by the criticality of the issue. Uh, they're, it's something that, uh, if you go by Osum, Osum is actually much more quantification, where the L E T is the criticality, and because it's the criticality, you can find that you get low ratings based on urgent maintenance, like you'll see, uh, three bridges here between twenty-one and thirty percent. Uh, one of those, the reason it receives such a low score is because the Beavers, Beavers had gone in and built a dam inside a culvert and plugged up. And it doesn't mean that that structure necessarily needed to be replaced. It just means that there was urgent maintenance required on the structure. And so I, I would be very careful about using these numbers in lifecycle planning for bridges. I think there's a lot more factors to be taken into account. And this is something that it helps the province in overall getting a, a, a idea of how things are at. But, uh, as far as detailed, uh, planning, it's, it's not always the best tool. Now, of course, our, our neighbor, uh, Saint Paul, uh, last year had an incident with one of their bridges. And, uh, I did have a chance to, uh, call and, and discuss with them about what happened there to see if we could learn anything for our, because of course, we have, uh, a lot of the same kind of bridges and the same kind, and, uh, they were doing pretty well the same things we're doing. They had a provincially certified, uh, consultant inspector out, uh, inspecting the bridges at the provincially recommended frequencies. This bridge actually had been inspected not that long before this happened. There was nothing in that inspection that indicated that this was going to happen. Uh, it, one thing that inspector had identified is, uh, recommended a level-two coring inspection, which basically is a sign that he wasn't really confident in what he was seeing out there, and he needed more information. It, uh, I know as an old bridge inspector myself, when I look at this photo, and the first time I saw it, there's a couple of things that jumped out at me. It, uh, uh, the first thing is, is, I know when talking to Saint Paul, if you look over the photo on the right-hand side, that would have been the supporting element underneath the bridge. It's called a timber pile bent. Uh, it's crease oak timber. According to engineering literature, those are only supposed to have, uh, last on average about forty years. And of course, this bridge was sixty-five years old when this happened. I guess the second thing I've noticed is, uh, this element would have been very difficult to inspect on a level-one inspection. I know as you're walking around the outside, it's just, it's in the middle of, uh, a, a, a water. water body and it, uh, uh, something that, I mean, hindsight is twenty-twenty, but I mean, we could maybe get an inspector out there in the middle of the winter and crawl under that bridge to, uh, look off the snow and the ice, but even then, it's difficult because you're only inspecting the top half of the element, the bottom half is under the ice and the water and, uh, and so it ends up being a real challenge to gauge the conditions of some of these bridges as they do kind of reach this age and, uh, you're not quite so confident in some of the, uh, condition of the elements anymore. So this is, uh, of course, one of our bridges in the MD, this one is south of Muriel Lake. Uh, it, uh, is, I picked it out because it was quite similar to the one in Saint Paul that did go down there. It's, uh, uh, on here, I'm gonna maybe talk about, uh, the, uh, substructures, the creosote timber substructures. We do have about thirty bridges right now in our inventory that have creosote timber substructures that are older than fifty years old. This one here, you can see that it is a, uh, uh, this is a two-span bridge or multi-span bridge, which is basically, uh, if it just had the two abutments, then it would be a single-span bridge between those two abutments, but because we have that pile bent in the middle as that indicates support, uh, it'll be going from the abutment to the pier, then the pier to the abutment, and those are all individual separate girders, uh, with a, with a, a joint over top of that bent. We don't, uh, uh, structural condition rating from the province, there's fifty-six percent on this, there's nothing in the inspection report that indicates there's any problem with it, but it is one I know we've talked about, maybe we should be looking at advancing this one, it's one of four bridges in our inventory that have that pile bent underneath it. When we do do our inspections, we're doing level one inspections on this structure and it's not a hands-on inspection on that pile bent, the inspector isn't up at that bent cap, hammer sounding that timber element. It is something we could do and if it is something where we need to push this, it's probably something I'm gonna be pushing to is, is to introduce those level of inspections, but, uh, uh, that's where we're at on that. Now, this is, uh, concrete girders, of course, concrete girders, uh, they have reinforcement in them, uh, concrete itself is strong in compression, but it's weak in tension, so we put, uh, steel reinforcement in them to handle all, all the tensile loads. What happens over time to reinforce concrete girders is a process called carbonation and what ends up happening is the, uh, pH level of the concrete is extremely alkaline when it's poured in a, in a new concrete. Uh, it's, uh, it's a real strong base, it's similar to, uh, the pH level of household bleach and that high, that pH level really helps protect the rebar that's inside and it'll be decades before we see any deterioration often in that rebar because of the passive protection provided by that, uh, that chemistry. What happens over time is, uh, you have a slow neutralization of that alkalinity of the concrete, usually about, uh, one inch every twenty-five years and, uh, of course, once we get to the two-inch depth, cover depth of the concrete, the, uh, uh, the rebar is no longer passively protected and depending on the amount of moisture and how much cracking is induced by trucks driving over the bridge, you'll get the corrosion process starting and, uh, this particular bridge is, uh, uh, the photo is fifty-eight years, the actual bridge is sixty years, uh, you can see the spalling in there, it was chunks of concrete spall- uh, falling off where the rebar is and, uh, at some point, this starts to reduce the strength of the bridge because, uh, you either lose section on the rebar or you will, uh, lose anchorage between the rebar and the concrete. And, uh, I, I guess as far as lifespan goes, we are usually about the forty to sixty years is where you start to run out of life on, on a reinforced concrete girder, depending on its usage. Uh, and then, of course, we do have four of our truss bridges, which are our structural steel structures. I don't know if you can see that well in this photo or not, but, uh, these are the deck stringers on Lassard Bridge. Uh, on the top flange there, you can see some pancake-type material between the deck timbers and the, and, and the stringers, that is pack rust, uh, that is what used to be steel and is now rust. Uh, it's, what'll eventually happen is enough of that, uh, steel has turned into rust that it really will impact the strength of the, uh, of the, uh, element. And so when we do go to replace the deck on this bridge, which I'm guessing probably about ten to fifteen years that'll, that will need to be replaced, we would have to look at, uh, replacing some of these stringers as well, which is gonna add some cost to that work. When we do get talking about asset management and lifecycle, uh, a legitimate question really starts to be, is it better to replace or rehab? And this is one where I could probably talk for forty-five minutes to an hour on the benefits and I'm not gonna get into it, but there are legitimate, even back when the MD replaced the pier underneath the structure a couple of years ago or a few years ago, there was a real case that could have been made that, uh, i- i- it would have been, uh, also of value to replace as opposed to repair. Of course, when we get into the bridge-sized culverts, uh, this one is one we're, have on the books this year to do some work on. As they get older, there's a number of things that can happen to them, uh, one of the things that we commonly see is we'll see, uh, the geometry of the culvert changing over time due to the soil pressures and, uh, we can have the culvert squishing or, uh, this one here, the reason we flagged it for work is, uh, uh, the roof of the culvert kept dropping between inspections and so we're getting more and more deflection underneath that roadway there and when the culvert does start to look less like a circle, a bit more like a heart, uh, we have what's called an inversion in the top and it loses its strong egg shape and at that point it becomes a real issue, so what we're doing with this one here is we're going to excavate over top of that culvert and over the, the, the problem areas and we're going to pour some structural concrete underneath there to take up those loads and stop and hopefully squeeze some more life out of it. Another thing that we can find on the culverts, of course, is corrosion. Uh, I mean, the raw water level in this photo is fairly low, uh, it was taken last fall. Um, I know the previous year when I was out here, the water's quite a little bit higher and you'll find that below the, where the water level in the culvert is, is they corrode and then just eventually disintegrates because of the corrosion and so you'll find in the older culverts that the corrosion starts to become an issue. We also can have erosion problems, of course, uh, in the outlets of these things, yeah, the years and years of water running will eventually perch them so that the fish can't get through them and that is something that, uh, of course, uh, if you're looking for your fish habitat, it's something that, uh, people will sometimes have some concerns about. So, in forecasting money, which I guess is the big question probably on council's mind, what we've done is on every bridge inspection report that we have done, Alberta Transportation Bridge Inspectors are trained to try to provide an estimate on remaining service life. There are some guidelines that they've used to do this and then they're allowed to, uh, make adjustments based on what they see in the field. And so on each one of our bridge inspection reports that we come in, they have in it what is called an estimated replacement date. And it's not a line in the sand, it's something where it is their best estimate at the time of how much longer we're gonna have to, when we should start expecting and planning to, uh, replace this structure, it's something where we can, there may be issues where I see it and I think, you know, I think we should be going after this earlier and, and there's times where I'll have a conversation with our, our consultant bridge engineer and say, hey, can we, uh, push this one back a couple of years and he might say that, well, and we do a little more frequent inspection on it or whatever. So when you see one of these numbers, we're using them for forecasting, but there is some flexibility in planning when those do take place. Now, as far as budgeting goes, uh, we do not currently have an annual budget for bridge lifecycle replacements. Uh, individual bridge projects have been funded through the capital budget, targeting a annual investment, we were, we've been going over the last few years for about three million dollars a year. I think we're a little bit above this year and then we're projecting a little bit to be lower next year just to average that out. I, the previous administration had established, uh, a, a bridge fund reserve, uh, in bridge budgets, we've been basing our budgets based on preliminary estimates, not, uh, not a more costly, uh, accurate estimate and what's been happening is, of course, is when we get to the time of tender, uh, we'll often, if we're finding we're a little bit short of money, we've been coming in front of council and, uh, asking if we can take some of that bridge fund reserve and using it to, uh, to top up, to award the project and proceed with the work. In the twenty-twenty-three budget, we are taking some money directly from the bridge fund reserve to assist us with our projects. Uh, we've combined it with, uh, two and a half million dollars of MSI funding, which my understanding is a little bit of a question mark going forward, uh, and, uh, to, to do our work this year. And we are not adding any additional money to the bridge fund reserve. Uh, we're projecting it, uh, to start at three point seven million dollars and end up at two point six million dollars, our bridge fund reserve by the end of the year, which gets us through this year, but it's not really so sustainable going forward, so of course, that is a conversation that needs to happen. Grant funding, of course, there was MSI which was paying for a certain amount, which is changing and there's a question mark on what that looks like and, uh, I honestly don't know what, what the future holds for that. When we did our projections, of course, what we did is we took all these bridge inspector, inspector estimated replacement dates and we took projects that we've done in recent years and what we did typically did is we took the cost of the project divided by the footprint area of the, of the structure and that would be either the deck area in the case of a bridge or the, uh, length of a culvert times the diameter of a culvert in the case of a culvert to establish a unit rate. And then we took all our existing footprints of all our remaining structures and plotted it all out to come up with a, a, a number that is fairly, uh, of course, we're showing between eighty and ninety million dollars over a ten-year period, which I'm sure nobody was expecting, but that was why we need to be, uh, up in front of you right now talking about this. These bars, of course, these bars are, each one of these is a series of bridge inspections with that date shown as an estimated replacement date. Uh, you can see for twenty-twenty-five, they're showing twenty bridges, uh, needing to be replaced in twenty-twenty-five. Of course, we're not going to be equipped to replace twenty bridges in twenty-twenty-five, I don't think there's enough project managers, there's not enough funding, there's not enough, but it is something we need to talk about. And the tw- of course, the twenty-twenty-four zero bridge is also not realistic. I would encourage council, rather than looking at the specific year, to look at the overall number over a ten-year period to give you a better idea of what to expect as far as needs go. Now, of course, as we start to extend it out, what we're really hurt, what is really hurting us is all these baby boomer bridges coming through the system right now. We're seeing about ten years of pain, uh, from these baby boomer bridges, if we're able to wait ourselves through all that, we should get to a point where things are a lot more sustainable from a, a regular year-to-year lifecycle replacement and, uh, on this twenty-five year curve here, you can see, uh, our average cost has dropped down to five and a half million dollars per year. And if we do extend it out to fifty or seventy-five years, it even drops further because we start to see the benefit of the seventy-five year design life kicking in and, uh, but what we're going to have to face in the upcoming ten to fifteen years is, is the ten-year scenario and, and how we're going to go deal with that. Now, in the reports that you've been given, there is a table thirteen on page twenty-one, I just wanted to provide a clarification on that, that table is showing as a five-year plan, what it really is, is a five-year table of needs. We have kind of a draft five-year plan in our office and we've been talking about, but really, a five-year, uh, plan is something that we need to develop in partnership with council, uh, because, of course, what's showing in table thirteen is not anywhere close to being funded or, uh, or, or approved or, uh, and we need to go forward from there. So, uh, are there any questions?
Good morning, uh, thanks for being so thorough. It's kind of a little bit of an eye-opening.
Yep.
Uh, so in regards to, uh, replacement costs and like who is replacing, uh, who's helping replace, like the big cities as far as, is, is the province helping out with, with the infrastructure costs of, of that in the big cities and not the, not the rules?
Of course, in working for a big city, I was operate, uh, involved in the inspection operation and maintenance of bridges and rehab of bridges. I know we did receive some MSI funding, I, of course, paying for it wasn't really my territory at the time, it was, I was more on the technical side of things on, 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 on initiating the work and, uh, and sometimes managing the work. I don't know, I-
Yeah, that's, that's, that's okay, I'm just kinda wondering, you know, has the province walked away from all their bridges or have they selected, uh, walked away from some and not others?
I thank you, uh, through the reef, uh, to the deputy reef and to council. So I think the, uh, the interesting, I think if you're to start comparing rural to the cities in particular, urban in particular, um, yeah, a lot of the bridges in the city of Edmonton, for example, are on provincial highway, anything, for example, in the Hyundai is, uh, is a provincial highway. And if you start looking at the actual bridges in the city of Edmonton, for example, how many are there? There's not a hundred and seventeen. Uh, our, our bridge liability is probably, uh, their bridges are much larger, uh, multi, you know, multi-lane traffic, so they're bigger bridges, but our bridge liability is probably just as significant in that we have more bridges carrying, you know, uh, you know, two-lane traffic, in some cases, single-lane traffic than the cities do, uh, with, uh, you know, downtown Edmonton's got what, six or seven spans that are city-owned and city-maintained, uh, probably one or two that are provincially maintained because they're part of a provincial highway network. So, uh, right now, it's my understanding that they're not receiving any money through, uh, additionally, uh, but they are getting a, a ton of infrastructure built on the provincial highways, the Hyundai, et cetera, et cetera, which, which provides those, uh, which provides those. One of our concerns is that, uh, as we move forward with the local government fiscal framework, is the asset management side. All the rumors are indicating that municipalities are gonna have to have done something to qualify for future provincial funding on any of these infrastructure projects. What we used to consider MSI, which we just got a chunk of money, we just had to tell them what we're using it for, as long as it met a very broad criteria, uh, there was no issue, you had go ahead, you could buy a truck with it, you could build a road with it, you could build a, a school with it, you could build a, you know, a, a playground with it, you could build a rec project with it, there was no issue. Now, I think, uh, as we move forward, and again, it's all still rumor and conjecture, but we understand that with, with the push that the province has to asset management, there will probably have to be a healthy asset management program in place that if we want to get a thing funded, a bridge, for example, it will have had to have something put away at our side for them, uh, to give us twenty percent, fifty percent, seventy-five percent, whatever those magic numbers are. So, that, that's our concern right now is we don't know what LGFF is going to do, nobody really does, um, so we don't know what funding's gonna be available. Fifteen years ago, these were owned by the province and were ma- managed by the province. Then about ten years ago, maybe a little, even earlier than that, probably in that twenty-thirteen, twenty-fifteen range, we had gap funding for bridges. The province, we would fix the actual bridge, the province would do the stuff that was attached to the bridge, you know, the road approaches, et cetera, et cetera, that went to the bridge. And then, uh, a few years back, that all disappeared completely and it was left to the MDs, um, and the municipalities to fund entirely the maintenance of that, those bridge infrastructures. We've got a hundred and seventeen bridges, there are municipalities in Alberta that have over two hundred bridges. However, one of the major differences between us and some of those others is we've got several that are spanning a major river, the Beaver River. Um, a lot of municipalities with this, with, uh, lots of bridges, a lot of culvert bridges, uh, et cetera, um, and we, we didn't, for example, at Neehill County, we didn't have any bridges that went across the Red Deer River. That was all done through, uh, on the provincial highway system, but here, we've got bridges that actually span the Beaver River, which is, you know, a, a major tributary. So, it, one of the concerns is exactly what funding is gonna be coming from the province and what does our program have to look like to be able to apply and be accepted into that program? We don't know the answer to that question.
Yeah, thank you. It's one of those things where the province has created like a level of service, uh, with these bridges and now they've walked away from that level. bridges, and now they've walked away from that level of service. And that is my concern. I mean, they full well knew that when they built these bridges, there's going to be a lifespan to these bridges and a cost to replace them. And they've walked away from that commitment. So it's unacceptable that the, well, there's only one taxpayer, whether it's there or not, but now it's, you know, the burden is on us, and a lot of our industry uses these bridges as well. And now, you know, at what level of service are we going to provide them? Are we going to look at getting rid of some of these bridges, are we not? Are we going to replace them? At a total inventory of $164 million replacement, that's pretty staggering.
And through the reef, to the deputy Reeve and to council, so a couple of interesting comments I would suggest they walked away from, bridges the same as they have policing, healthcare, and a variety of other things. So that is, but I think the other point that rural Alberta needs to make in terms of bridge funding, 80% of the wealth of Alberta comes from rural Alberta. RMA has been singing that song now for many years. The bridge programs in the cities are not providing the wealth to the province, the bridge programs in rural Alberta are providing. If you look at our bridge program, for example, how much of the wealth of Alberta is crossing our creeks and rivers on a daily basis as opposed to what's happening in the, you know, the city of Red Deer, for example? The wealth of the province is created in rural Alberta, and particularly in those municipalities such as us, that are very highly focused and highly effective in the oil and gas industry. So I think the push has to be made on the province to provide some additional funding. The problem we have is we're looking at, you know, an annualized or a number with inflation of $90 million. Even if the province was to come to the table with a check for $5 million, we still have to come up with $85 million. If they were to come with 10, we still have to come with 80. So there still is a responsibility on the municipality to somehow annuitize and have a long-term strategy in terms of how these bridges are going to be repaired. And that strategy may include closing some bridges. That strategy may mean reducing loads on some bridges. I mean, we're not specifically saying that you've got to go out and rebuild all these bridges in the next 10 years and spend $90 million. But there is going to have to be some thinking caps put on and some time spent around the table to determine what is the long-term strategy for bridges for the MD.
I just had a question quick. Even if we had the money to do it, like, who would do all these bridges? Like, there's a, how many other counties and MDs that are going to have the same, same bridges made by the same guys years ago? So who would do all the work? Like, it's almost impossible.
That is a significant risk that I see. I see a big glut coming forward of bridge construction being needed, whether it's proactive or reactive, as there's lots of municipalities out there with similar age curves that what we have. If everybody decides to double or triple their bridge construction all at once, I don't think there's enough bridge engineers out there, I don't think there's enough bridge contractors out there, I'm not sure there's enough precasters out there, cement powder, I would have to, I'm not sure if that has been studied at a higher level, how society itself meets those needs as opposed to just us. At this point, we have been getting fairly competitive results on our tenders. We're often getting five bidders at a time, which suggests that we're not there yet.
Yeah.
Everything that I put together and everything that I see out there suggests it's coming. There is a coming. And if it is a fairly smoothed-out curve, there may be, maybe I'm making a mountain out of a molehill, and it'll, industry will adapt to the need. But if it is a sudden knee-jerk that we need to suddenly replace all these bridges, there could be a problem in meeting that demand.
Well, I don't think we'll be able to afford it. You might have to shut a bridge down if it's, if we're doing these inspections, because if you can't, you can't afford every, you can't afford it. So you're going to have to shut a bridge down.
Yeah, I mean, we may have to be forced in some fairly uncomfortable decisions in years to come.
Counselor Swiger, I think you were next.
Yeah, it's interesting, because you, like, the people watching this aren't seeing this, but table 13 is 33 bridges, and it's a five-year plan from 2023 to 2027 at 38 point, or 38 million, 38 and a half million. But some of those, some of the, well, one of them is on Highway 55, and the CAO mentioned Edmonton, and a lot of their bigger bridges are on provincial highways, but like, 55 to me is a provincial highway, and so is 892 going through Ardmore. And so, but we still have, I guess I'm rambling here, but it's just irritating that the province is doing what they're doing. But I'll just ask the CAO though, can we, I mean, good study we've done here, the province needs to have this, and I'm hoping all municipalities do this.
Thank you, through the reef, to Counselor Swiger, absolutely. And I certainly have recommended to several counselors that they speak directly at the bear pit session at convention. I have provided the bridge report to others in the provincial government and those who hope to be in the provincial government. So, but I think one of the things the council is going to have to do, you know, the Reeve is absolutely correct in terms of closing bridges, but I think there has to be some strategy. Is it, you know, what is the level of service council wants for bridges? Do you want to bridge every mile off every grid road that crosses the Beaver River or crosses a creek? Or is every two miles acceptable, or is every four miles acceptable? And that's really going to be part of the question here, is if you want to maintain the exact what you have today, you're going to have to spend $90 million. If there are some places where maybe somebody has to drive two kilometers east, west, north, or south to get to the nearest bridge, that may be something that'll have to be discussed as a level of service. Because at the end of the day, this really also becomes a level of service question. Do you need that bridge, or can you go two kilometers left or right to get to the other bridge? I do think there needs to be letters written, and this is going to be an issue at the provincial government in the next three or four years, because as Todd clearly articulated, the baby boomer bridges are right across the province. We are literally talking thousands of bridges in the province that were built in the late 40s to the mid 60s. They have started to collapse, there's been a couple in the last couple of years, St. Paul and Rocky View was a few years before that. These are going to become an issue, and municipalities are going to be going to the province to have this discussed. So far, those discussions have fallen on deaf ears.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor.
So you made lots of good comments about, you know, maybe some of these bridges aren't required, or we can, you know, they're required, but we can get around some other way. So the list we have here with the 33 on it, are, have we kind of done any studies, say, is there a better way, like, this bridge or a culvert, you know, there's another way around there a mile away? Can we get away with not having all these bridges? Have we looked at that yet? Because we need to look at all these bridges and say...
That's an excellent question. The answer today is no. What we've done is just compiled the list of the current bridges, and I think that's the further development of this plan, is what would we recommend over the course of the next few years of bridges that we could just say, listen, when it reaches its end of life? Are we closing it? And it's over? And are we going to route traffic to somewhere else? That's really going to be a discussion that council has. What we're providing today is just the administrative overview of the current bridges, and then from there, the level of service and what that looks like, and Counselor Swiger is absolutely correct, is are there going to be, so we will, we will start putting together some information, you know, over the course of the next year, in terms of what that future road network and future bridge network could look like that would save having to spend some of this money.
Yeah, because I'm sure, it depends if you're going east, west, or north, south, you can cross the same creek for five miles in a row or 10 miles in a row. And, you know, it's, and if they're all built at the same time, chances are they're all going to be failing at the same time. So I think what Mr. Hogan is saying is that, you know, someday we might have to take every second mile out or every fourth, every, every two miles between every four miles. I don't know, it's just, it might not, might, something might change, but that's what we're faced with right now. Go ahead, Counselor Slipcheck.
So on these bridges, what amount of bridges are going to require extensive roadwork as well to the cost of the bridge? I imagine we got quite a few of those.
I'll leave it to Todd, but I know the Lassard Bridge is significant if you want, if we were interested in a road realignment. Lassard Bridge is the one that jumps to my mind. That bridge replacement, that's a 95-year-old bridge, and that bridge replacement is estimated today at around $10 million. A quick estimate of the roadwork for a realignment is probably another four to five million. You know, that could be upwards of $15 million project all by itself. I hear lots of comments about the Lassard Bridge from residents about the way the road is, but the bridge itself, and I know that we did have some pictures in the presentation on the Lassard Bridge, it's been band-aided for a bunch of years, it's still in reasonably good health considering its age.
Yeah.
But I would also, just to put it in perspective, we talked about 90-year-old bridges. The Lassard Bridge and the Alesworth in the Goodrich area were built before many of our fathers were born. Just put that in perspective for a moment. The Alesworth is a 105-year-old bridge. I don't think any of our fathers are made it to 105. So this is how old some of this infrastructure is, and we've been, we've been patching it, and previous administrations and previous public works departments here have done a great job of keeping these bridges up to snuff. But at some point, Father Time catches up even on bridges.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So should we prepare to order some ferries and be prepared?
Deputy Fede, have you had one more comment?
Yeah, it's a grueling task. You don't realize how many bridges there are out there until, like, a major flood happens. A couple of years ago, I was, had the task of going, seeing somebody in LeMond County, and with one creek that's there, probably crossed 11 culvert, 11 culvert bridges. You had to go around six miles, and they, you know, they decided to close them because the only thing that was accessing was farmers, and they were using, they were going field to field. So a lot of the, just people running around didn't need them. But it's a, it's a big commitment from administration, figuring out which ones or which way to go. It was, it's crazy.
Yeah, that'd be a big, big decision. Yeah, go ahead, Counselor.
Could we get, would it be hard to get the information, see what plan, what bridges could be closed, and what would that number would come down to then for replacement costs?
We certainly, if council wanted to direct administration to come back with a report and recommendations as to how we could reorganize our road slash bridge network, that would eliminate some of these bridges from having to be, they could go to their end of life, and council was comfortable with them going to their end of life and then closing them. We absolutely could come up with a recommended plan, you know, probably, probably by the fall for sure. And then council could determine from there. The big thing now is if we're going to continue and not do anything other than repair and replace these bridges, is we're looking at an annualized, money's going into reserve at 5.466 million dollars. So that's, that's an annual payment in the reserves to cover the cost of doing these bridges over the next 25 years. These are real dollars. And even if we cut that in half, that still means that every year, on top of the bridge replacement that was happening, there would need to be two and a half million or $3 million going into the reserve on a annual basis, even if we could cut in half the number of bridges that needed to be repaired or replaced.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah. That's not good to have it, you should have had that at the beginning of a meeting, not at the end of a meeting.
I also want to say that we are blessed in the municipality that we have, we have Todd and Cola working for us, an experienced bridge inspector, city of Calgary, experienced on major bridges. Our program is absolutely better with Todd here. The presentation was great, and we've got probably one of the best in the business, and I'm thrilled that he works for us.
Yeah, awesome. We just need a taller podium and mic for him, that's all. We gotta, we gotta figure that out.
I'll requisition something. I'll put it in next year's ballot. So after that, there's no impact to the 2023 budget, but it could have impact on future budgets, and it's administration's recommendation that council accept a state-of-the-infrastructure report for MD bridges as information.
Okay, thank you. Just looking for a motion, gentlemen.
I'll make that motion, but I'd like to add to, if we do, get administration to check other bridges that we could close and look at our options, because we may as well start preparing for this. That's a lot of money we're going to have to spend.
That's just, you're just giving, you don't need that in a motion.
We'll start, that's the follow-up to this.
Awesome. Any discussion on this?
Just a question of...
Yes, go ahead.
How much have we been putting into, for the bridge files over the last bunch of years, per year?
Through the reef, to Counselor Swiger, there's really been nothing putting in. I think we had $6 million put in at one point in time, but nothing else has been, and that was years ago, but, and that created the bridge reserve fund, but nothing has been going into that fund since, and we've just been depleting that as Mr. Honkled had alluded to. That's just been depleted and depleted every year when our budget money doesn't equal what the actual costs are after tender. So we've been just taking that money out to top it up. So nothing has been going in.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, seeing that, I'll call for the vote. One more motion?
I couldn't smell that at all.
Have another motion? Did administration brings back additional information? You guys want to do that? Don't need it?
We need all of them.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, counsel.
You guys want to eat or finish off?
I'm hungry.
Are you hungry?
I can smell food.
Okay, we'll eat quickly. Okay, welcome back. Good afternoon. We're on to 9.5.1, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve and members of council. 9.5.1 is the financial assistance for victims of fire policy amendment. Administration is prepared to amend and draft the policy number 1.006 Financial Assistance for Victims of Fire policy to clarify the criteria for approving payments to victims of fire and bring the criteria more in line with council's intentions for the program. The financial assistance for victims of fire policy grants an immediate one-time bursary to qualifying victims of fire. However, another clause in the policy also requires the CO to conclude that the fire is not considered unlawful or suspicious. Administration is proposing to remove the former statement for the following reason: it conflicts with council desire to make the payment available immediately following a fire, and the CO does not have the expertise to determine whether fire is considered unlawful or suspicious. Other proposed amendments to the policy are meant to add clarity for administration of the program. The committee as a whole reviewed the policy on the 21st of February and are recommending the council adopt amended policy with the following additional amendments: adding a statement regarding tax arrears, the property cannot be in tax arrears, and removing municipal boundaries. These additional amendments have been made to the policy and prepared for council's consideration. Funding for this program comes from the council grants to individuals and non-government organizations budget. Annual funding for the program varies depending on the number of fires eligible for payment. The recommendation from administration is the council adopts amending policy number 1006 Financial Assistance for the Victims of Fire policy. You can see in amendment, in appendix A, the changes that were made regarding that, the removal of 2D, and the addition of number one regarding residential fire with the MB, the Bonneville Regional Fire Authority shall notify the MB notice of fire damage from within 48 hours of the event, and the amount is left the same, and the property indicated on the notice of fire damage form situated with the MB and not currently in tax arrears with municipality.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Just looking for a motion. Yeah. Thank you, Counselor Cravieak, for making the motion on behalf of council, that council adopts amended policy number 1.006 Financial Assistance for Victims of Fire policy as presented. Any discussion on this motion? Yes, Counselor Crick.
So, thank you, Mr. Reeve. What would happen then if some, if there was a fire that was obviously suspicious or by an unlawful cause? Would we still write the check for $2,500?
Through the reef, to council and to Counselor Crick, I have, it would, somebody would have to, it would be very clear that it was unlawful, and I don't know how in a 24-hour period or a 48-hour period, that information would come to light. That is just, that was in the old policy. I don't believe that it was ever once acted upon, and I'm certainly not in a position from my office signing the check and authorizing the payment to make that determination. So unless the fire chief or the RCMP came to me and said, "By the way, we suspect something," then I might withhold payment until we can come to council and have a council meeting or a special council meeting regarding it. But in the unlikely event that it was something, we are only talking about $2,500, we're not talking about an enormous sum of money. But I, I'm not comfortable saying you make the decision because... But I, I'm not comfortable saying you make the decision because I'm not a fire investigator. And I don't think most fire departments investigate fires inside twenty-four, forty-eight hours. It's still hot. And investigators don't usually go into a fire until, until the, the actual fire location has, has cooled to a temperature where they can actually sift through the rubble to determine the cause of the fire.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm good with that then, as long as there is that certain level of discretion there that if the fire chief or the RCMP indicates that likely is suspicious or unlawful, then we can withhold that and have a council discussion.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion?
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. Just know those years we never had one fire that was suspicious, but if there is, it can always add to their taxes or whatever, you know. Thank you.
All right, I'll call for the vote. Thank you, that's carried. Onto nine-point-five-point-two.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of the council. Nine-point-five-point-two, I would call upon Mr. Bespolko.
Good afternoon.
There we go. Good afternoon, Reeve and counsel. Today, we have a request for a decision for the public auction establishing the reserve bid. Council is required to set reserve bids and conditions for each parcel of land to be offered for sale at a public auction. The conditions were established at the regular council meeting, or regular meeting of council on December fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two. Council is now required to set the reserve bid prior to the public auction scheduled to be held on Monday, March twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three. Section four-nineteen of the Municipal Government Act states, "The council must set, A, for each parcel of land to be offered for sale at a public auction, a reserve bid that is as close as reasonably possible to the market value of the parcel, and B, any conditions that apply to the sale." The reserve bid has been established by the municipal assessors after review of the current real estate market sales. Conclusion of this review is that the estimated market value of the below-listed properties are, and there's only one, an reserve bid for the legal description oh-eight-two-six-four-seven-three, block one, lot two, with a link number of zero-zero-three-three-three-nine-two-five-three-one, roll number fifty-nine-oh-nine-oh-one-three-zero-zero-three. The reserve bid is requested to be set at three-hundred-and-three thousand. Administration recommends that council approves the reserve bid for the Monday, March twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three public auction of lands on the tax arrears list as follow, as follows. For the legal description, oh-eight, oh-eight-two-sixty-four-seventy-three, block one, lot two, link number zero-zero-three-three-three-nine-two-five-three-one, roll number fifty-nine-oh-nine-oh-one-three-zero-zero-three, a reserve bid of three-hundred-and-three thousand. Council's options are that council approves the reserve bid for the Monday, March twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three public auction of lands on the tax arrears list as stated, two, that council denies the reserve bid for the Monday, March twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three public auction of lands on the tax arrears list as presented, or three, that council directs administration to bring back additional information regarding the reserve bid for Monday, for the Monday, March twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three public auction of lands on the tax arrears list to a future meeting of council as directed.
Thank you. Just looking for a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, thank you, Counsel Slipchuk for making a motion on behalf of council. That council approves a reserve bid for Monday, March twenty-seventh, two-thousand-twenty-three public auction of lands on the tax arrears list as followed below. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
You're welcome. Onto nine-point-five-point-three, eighteen, sorry?
Yeah, before we get onto that, can I go in closed session under FOIP intergovernmental? Counsel Scarsen has to leave later on, so I thought we'd get this dealt with now.
Okay. Okay, welcome back. So we're just turning back on our computers and stuff. I think we have some motions that are coming out of camera, correct? You're just typing them up right now, or some of them? Yeah, we need a little bit of time.
We basically have them ready to go. Whomever would like to start with making a motion first.
Okay. Which one do you have ready to go first?
Okay, I'll make the motion directing the Reeve and the deputy Reeve to talk to the mayor of the city of Coal Lake with our concerns regarding- as discussed in camera.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Crick, for making a motion on behalf of council. That council directs the Reeve and deputy Reeve to meet with the mayor and deputy mayor of the city of Coal Lake regarding the municipality's concerns as discussed. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Just looking for another motion.
Yeah, I'll make the next motion to, I don't remember what it was discussed with, the town.
We can cast it in a moment.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Scarsen, for making a motion on behalf of council. That council directs Chief and Minister, C.A.O. and the Reeve to meet with the chief, the C.A.O. and the mayor of the town of Bonneville as discussed. Any discussion on this? Motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Do we have one more? We had a lot of long debate there. I can't remember. What's the next one?
If someone would like to table the discussion on the bylaw until March twenty-eighth.
I'll make that motion table.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Slipchuk, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council tables items nine-point-five-three bylaw number eighteen-forty-one, fire hall number one renovation loan bylaw until March twenty-eighth, two-thousand-twenty-three, regular meeting of council. I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. Yep, thank you, Counsel Scarsen, for your input today. Have a good rest of the day. Yeah, we'll take a five-minute break. Thank you. Okay, welcome back. I believe we're going on to nine-point, or ten-point? Put the glasses on.
Nine-point-six-point-one, Mr. Reeve.
Yep, nine-point-six-point-one, thank you.
So nine-point-six-point-one is the, is the only council invitation we received this week, the Coal Lake Regional Chamber of Commerce Annual General Meeting on Friday, the seventeenth. I do believe that the vast majority of counselors have already registered. If somebody hasn't, please reach out to Ms. Bartlett. But I know that most counselors have already signed up to attend the AGM.
Robin, I'll go.
Just let you know, just if, if, like if it's available, there's only fifty seats and they have been going fast. So Ms. Robin have to get hold of somebody like next half an hour.
I said I would go as well, so-
Well, if you said already, it's good.
It's good then.
Yeah, I hadn't.
So we get tickets when we get there? Oh, at the Best Western. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I just said, but maybe there's no more tickets. I, okay, we're on to correspondence. Ten?
And for correspondence, Mr. Reeve, but you can see the correspondence report, there's nothing specific there that I'd like to point out. The only thing that he's pointed is the letter from the city of Coal Lake to the Minister of Municipal-
Affairs, sorry about that. The letter from the city of Coal Lake to the Minister of Municipal Affairs on the ID three-fourty-nine Revenue Sharing Formula Concerns. And as I previously indicated, the town of Bonneville and the village of Glendon have both indicated they're not interested. And as a result, that initiative on behalf of the city of Coal Lake will not move forward. The ministry won't do much unless it's unanimous to change the funding formula.
Mr. Reeve?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, can I just ask what, what, I mean, it seems straightforward to me, but the, when we signed that agreement, did the minister, are we decided on a, on a per capita value or something? Or it was, it was a per capita deal, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, per capita had part of it, equalized assessment was part of it, but the per capita part was based on the twenty-sixteen census. And there's a new census that's come out federally in twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one. And, and the city of Coal Lake's numbers changed upwards. Ours, the town of Bonneville's and the village of Glendon's went downwards. So as a result, if, if the minister agreed to change the funding formula based on that census, the city of Coal Lake would see more money and the rest of us would see less money.
Yes, Counsel Cravieak.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. I'd be willing to change the agreement if the A.M.D. gets a per capita as well.
Thank you for that comment. Anything else in correspondence? If not, I'm looking for a motion, gentlemen.
I'll move that we accept his information.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Crick, for making a motion on behalf of council. The council accepts the following correspondence as information, one through eight. Any discussion on this? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Okay, that's carried. We're looking for reports from council and I've been told that we have to start left to right today.
Thank you. On the, on the second, had, it was supposed to be an emergency board meeting with the B.R.F.A., but we didn't have, not have quorum. It was the three members from the A.M.D. and one from the town that showed up, so it was more of a discussion. And a lot of that's been discussed in camera, so I'm not going to elaborate anymore further on that. Also, got to go to the A.M.D. tubing night at the ski hill. That was a good event and I see the staff out enjoying themselves with their families. And then, of course, we had our special council meeting as well. So other than that, that's it for me.
Okay, thank you, Counsel. Sorry, Deputy Reeve Fadav.
Yeah, nothing to report for his committees goes. I did go for the tubing night, but I just went for a quick sandwich and that was it.
Okay, thank you, Counsel. Thank you, Counsel Cravieak.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. Had a lodge meeting. Of course, there's an issue with the funding. We need an increase in funding, we would like, because of the high cost of utility bills. The income threshold should be increased as well because many people now have RSPs and pensions. And, and if you're above the income threshold, then it's harder, you lose thirty points out of the, out of a hundred. There was also a COVID outbreak at the lodge here in Bonneville.
Yeah.
Four people were, had COVID and five staff, and three of them were sent to the hospital, so hopefully they improve and get better. B.R.F.A. also had a police meeting. There's not many of us there, only five of us were there. Bonneville, this numbers, seven-hundred-sixteen files created in January, two or six were traffic-related, seven impaired, zero resultant charges, four or eight collisions and so on. The police officers, thirty-six files in February, thirteen bylaw-related files, three joint force operations, two with the town of Bonneville, R.C.M.P., focused on distracted driving and crime prevention, and the third one was with the sheriffs. And Coal Lake gave a report for two-thousand-twenty-two. Mr. Benzmiller there. So total calls for service two-thousand-twenty-two was eleven-thousand-four-hundred-and-ten, and that's an increase over two-thousand-twenty-one. And they're all very busy with many, many files, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Swigert?
Riverlands Trails Committee, so I was at a meeting with them virtually. They talked a little bit about some trail infrastructure repair grants, one for ninety-two-hundred dollars and another one for a thousand bucks for some cleanup grants. They're looking, Riverlands Trails is the group that leases out the Munichor Trail, so they kind of manage and lease that trail out. So they're, they're actually looking for members to sit on their executive, just because it's an old, it's an old committee that's been there forever and the same guy's doing it forever and they're getting older. So they're looking for different other members from user groups like quads and whatever use those trails. There was a virtual RMA that some of us attended and it was really to do with the unpaid oil and gas taxes throughout Alberta. And it was pretty, pretty interesting. Paul McLaughlin is the RMA president and he was very vocal and very, really upset about the government really isn't helping right now and he wants to make it a big election issue. And there'll be lots more at RMA about that one. He made the comment, also budget twenty-twenty-three, we're losing about a billion dollars in funding municipalities are. The last one was a Munichor meeting I was at. Again, they did mention the Riverlands Trail Group trying to get people on their executive. And they talked about the Prairies, a Prairies Can federal grant. So they were approved for two-hundred-sixty-five-thousand dollars to do four separate projects. One was a digital library, cost of seventy-one thousand. Next one was an ambassador program, forty-seven thousand. Egg food tourism project for seventy-one thousand. And Alberta's Iron Horse Trail Economy Muse Artisans at Work Destination Grant for fifty thousand. So a lot of those things actually do kind of benefit the A.M.D. of Bonneville. And so the lady, Mary Ann Jenke, who's in charge of that board, was going to reach out to the A.M.D. to make sure we knew about all these different initiatives that they're doing, so, yeah. And that was, oh, so my other comment though was to do with the, I'm getting calls about the snow removal hardship program. And, and I don't know if we have to look at it again. It's, it's an issue. But when we, we changed that program, so you have to be seventy-five years or older to apply for it. And that really wasn't the purpose of the program. It was for people who needed, had the hardships. And, but we have an issue in the A.M.D. that there is more and more people using it. And maybe it wasn't necessarily hardships because they probably had funding to pay for a backhoe or a bobcat or whatever. But it was kind of being used a bit too much. But I think we do have to look at the program again though and, and find out if we're getting, you know, lots of complaints from people that are over, there aren't seventy-five, but they're over sixty or whatever and they can't apply because they're not old enough. And it doesn't make sense because that wasn't the purpose of the program. So I'm not sure how we deal with that one, but maybe it could be brought back for a discussion.
Okay, thank you. I guess most of you guys reported on some of the things that I was at. I just, I attended a science fair in, in Coal Lake at Saint Dominic. I had never done one- I had never done one of those before. It was a great event. There was kids from grade four, five and six there. I was very impressed with these kids and what they could do and their, their science projects and I guess the one, the one that caught my eye the most was a young girl and be darned if I can remember her name, but she did this, she did about seventy tests with a, with a high blood pressure machine and, and music. And she would rate your heart, so from raunchy music to a real nice classical piece. And she, she, she did about seventy, she used about eight different people and she did about eight or nine different tests on each person and she monitored their heart rate and their, and if they disliked or liked the song. And, and then she, there was two judges, myself and another gentleman from E S O. So we threw the, we threw the heart monitoring machine on him and gave him a set of headphones and it was pretty cool how it almost mimicked exactly the rest of the people how, and it made a difference if you liked or disliked the song as well. It was incredible how much work she put into this, this young girl at grade six and have to have a shout out to her. She didn't win the event. There was another young gentleman that won on the whole, the whole thing, but have to say kudos to all the kids that participated there. It was a, I was really impressed by all the kids and all their displays, they're all so well done. It's too bad there has to be a winner, but that's how it goes. And then I was very blessed here on, I think it was Friday, there was a young, a young kid in the A M D, his name is Rhett, he's from the Lassard area. He decided he wanted to be me for the day and he came to school dressed up as the Reeve of Bonneville. It really made, yeah, made it worthwhile. It's pretty cool to have some kid wishing that he was you to dress up like me and go to school and pretend he's me for the day. It got splashed, I don't know how many texts and things I got from it. People were just texting to me one after another. So I just, I just, I was coming from that science fair anyway and so I just said, I phoned his mom and found out where at school he was attending, he was here at Notre Dame. So I got Tracy, she got me some stuff and I crashed a class and you should have seen this kid's smile on his face and the kids were just pumped, so I made his day, but he really made my day, so shout out to Rhett there for doing that, made, made my day, so thanks. So, great. I think we can adjourn now. Okay? Thank you, Councilor Slipchuk, all those in favor. Carried. Good, good job, everyone.
Thank you.
Yes.
Just thinking, maybe next council meeting could we have some classical music?
Yeah. We could have used-